A little bit of a late start, but I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. And we'll begin this meeting as we do all others. With Catherine, our student representative here for the last time for her before she graduates, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I would like to take this opportunity to open the floor for public comment. If anyone would like to speak, feel, please feel free to come to the microphone at the front. Don't see a lot of movement in that direction, so we'll have a last call for public comment. If they don't hear anyone or see anyone, we will proceed with the agenda as listed with a couple amendments. School Board members, I'd like to make a couple adjustments if you all would be willing to do it. We have some guests here to talk about extended learning opportunities. I'd like to do that immediately following Catherine's report and then have Greg present on some awarded contracts and then we'll proceed with the rest if that works for everyone. Okay. Catherine, would you like to proceed with your report and the calendar of events?
At the elementary school on Thursday, May 31st, the elementary school band has a concert and that'll be at the junior senior high school gym. And tomorrow, there's the Memorial Day Parade and some of the students will be performing that as well. So I believe that starts at either 5:30 or 6:00. Well, I have to be there by 5:30. For sports this week, baseball ended its season with a record of 13 to 3 and will now be moving on to the Division Four prelims. It'll be a home game, 4 o'clock versus Lisbon, and that is Thursday, I believe. Softball ended its season with a record of 11 to 7. Its Division Four prelims are Wednesday, 4:00 PM at Profile High School. For track, Sierra Holden placed second in the 300 hurdles and sixth in the 100 hurdles, making a new record time of 17.11 seconds. Cameron Young placed fifth in the girls' 800 and Allison Galian made a new shot put record at 27 feet, 5 inches, which seems like a lot. Seems like a really big distance. At the junior senior high school, the improv show is this Friday, June 1st, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Next Thursday, June 7th, the class of 2018 has their awards night. Friday, June 8th is graduation. And then after that, baseball awards are June 11th at 6:30. Softball awards are June 18th at 6:30. And then track awards are June 12th at 6:30. I think that's all from me.
Catherine, I want to say again that we have appreciated having you on the board this year. You have done an excellent job sharing a student perspective and a unique one and have articulately shared your thoughts throughout the year and we appreciate your consistent attendance and participation in our meetings and wish you the best at USM next year and hope that you'll come back and let us know how you're doing.
Of course.
So, thank you. Moving along, we will have Mr. LaVassar come up and talk about the extended learning opportunities if he would.
Thank you so much again for the opportunity to come and talk to you about this program. Just wanted to follow up on our discussion in February and highlight a couple of the extended learning opportunities we've had this year and hear from one of our community partners and also one of our students. So, when those are behind me, we'll figure out that. All right, so the first, the first ELO I want to talk about, how was the student who was interested in learning more about floor design, running small business? She, this experience not only completely sparked her interest in floor design, but also got her thinking more about, you know, creating business and kind of looking forward in that now. So, that's been kind of cool to see and reading her during her entries from, from day one where she's kind of figuring out just the shop and being in that setting to putting her own arrangements together. It has been critical through this experience. I do have, if there's time, a three and a half minute video, a time lapse of your final product.
Please share it.
Do you need us to provide him with a microphone?
No, I'm sorry. Where is it? Thank you. This way. That way.
A arrangement I'm gonna make. I got the green foam from the fridge, my, my tools from the tool table. And white and yellow daisies from around the shop.
You know what? I'm gonna just let it load and let everybody else come up and then.
Perfect.
Sorry. That, that.
It's pausing at the right moment.
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right. Come back to that, sorry. Our second student was interested in pursuing a career in accounting and she had the opportunity to, to spend part of her day at Chinburg, working their accounting department with Jen. Student was looking for, for something in that, that preferred career field to kind of get more experience, firsthand experience. So, the goal was to develop a base understanding for accounts payable and to, to learn about the accounting department's role in a property management company like that. Jen is here to kind of talk about, about that experience, so. Turn it over here.
The mic's here. Give the mic to the middle.
Back.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen Marston and I'm the Accounting and Human Resources Manager for Chinburg Properties. Been there about 12 years now. Ryan had come to me in September to talk about opportunities we might have to get the high school kids in, either in the office or out in the field. Out in the field is a little more challenging because of what we do. In our conversation, it came up that he had this great person who loves accounting, wants to be an accountant, and it just so happened I was kind of thinking about getting a part timer. And as we were talking, and I told him what I wanted this person to do, filing, document destruction, scanning, Brenda was brought up. And I thought it was a great idea because I did the same program back in Kidderi many moons ago, when I started working in a bank in high school. So when she came in, she started doing the filing, the document destruction, et cetera. And before long, we do do property management along with general contracting, and she was taking in tenant payments. We have about 1,000 tenants. She was processing those. She was doing vendor statements. When Ryan and I talked about her doing this ELO and receiving credit for what she was doing, we started to expand her responsibilities. So in January, she started doing one of the set of books that we have. We have about 20 active rental properties and picked a small one and she now does it from start to finish. That is her property, that's her baby. She does the invoice entry, she does the payments, she does the financial reporting to the owner who's in the office. She does it start to finish. She also worked with me on setting up, cleaning up the general ledgers for all of our companies. They all had been started at different times by different people. GL account numbers were all over the place. So I had a glossary I had come up with, she went in, did what she could, and then she sat in my office. And she had so many great questions. Okay, why do you post it like this? Why is this a debit, not a credit? Why is this this type of account? So she was really absorbing a lot of what we're doing in the day-to-day accounting world. So now she's actually helping us, we're doing a software conversion. And she's inputting information, she's putting in labor authorizations and team members and you name it, she's inputting it. So I, I think she's really benefiting from the, the real-life experience. She's in an office, she calls me when she can't come in, she's interacting with my department, she's interacting with the staff in the office. She's really becoming, become a part of the company. And for a high school student, I think that's a great thing. And she's taught me to be a little patient because I've been doing this for so long, I take so much for granted. Oh, you don't know how to do that. So I have to stop and step back a little bit. So it's good to have that, that other perspective. So I just wanted to say what a great program this is. And you know, when she goes off to college, I hope this program continues because I'll need somebody when she goes to college. So I'm hoping I'll get someone else from Ryan.
Thank you for your willingness to have her come in and learn so much on your, at your office.
It's been great, yeah. It's been really great.
Because those are marketable skills that can be taken with you guys or beyond and it's, it's a great gift to have to build the resume.
She's already made it known, she's coming back on breaks, so.
There you go. There you go.
So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm always amazed and people are committed to that, to be able to hear stories like this about, I hope the majority of our students are, are like this and I'm beginning to believe that.
Yeah.
Because it's just very sharp and very interesting.
Yeah.
So, thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Take this back over for a second. The, the last ELO I want to talk about is one you may have had an opportunity to experience last week at the spring concert. I'll actually let Jackson just kind of take this one away.
Well, let us give you the mic.
Yeah, I'll put it over here. There you go.
This is cool. So, a while ago, well, okay, my name is Jackson, Jackson Tower. I'm a junior at New Market High School. A while ago, back in like December, I think, Ms. Ray, my band teacher, approached me with this idea that I could compose a piece for the school band. And I thought it'd be a cool idea, but then when she told me that I could get a credit for it and have it be an ELO, and then we talked to Mr. Lassar and a bunch of other, like Mr. York and Mr. Andruski and Mr. Mazzoni, and it just seemed like a really cool opportunity. And so I started working on it. In class, I spent a lot of time. At home, I spent a lot of time on it. I learned a software program to write it so that way you could print it out. I learned a lot of what it takes to arrange music and stuff like that. I learned how, how much work it actually is instead of, I thought it was gonna be a lot easier than it turned out to be. And so, and I, I kept a log of probably like 80 logs on it, like a lot. And I got up to around like 64 hours I spent on it, so it took a lot. Ran into problems. We're like, oh man, this is harder than I thought. And I figured out how to solve those problems. And in the end, I was really happy with the result, the final product. Everyone did such a great job playing it and I was very proud to say that I was able to do this. And I wouldn't have been able to do it without Ms. Ray and Mr. LaVassar giving me this great opportunity for this ELO. And I would recommend it to a lot of students to do stuff like this because it was really cool.
Jackson, as someone who had the pleasure of hearing your piece played by the band last week, and several of us were there, it was an amazing piece of music that you wrote. And it was a beautiful time for the school as a whole because a teacher at the school is providing a special opportunity for a student at the school, for the younger ones to see and for the community to see. So I was very proud of you as a mom.
Thanks.
Not yours, but one.
Yeah.
And, you know, you should be proud of yourself because your, your hard work showed.
Yeah. I hope that a lot of other students are inspired to do something similar.
Jackson, are you gonna stick with music, you think?
Oh, yeah. That's, that's, that's what I'm doing.
This is also like a huge thing for your application.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, you get like a video to show them.
Yeah, I do. Hopefully I'll, hopefully, I will have it for when I present to school board on Thursday.
So it's cool, do you think?
I'm looking at Berklee College Music in Boston.
Excellent.
I've been there, it's really cool.
Could be very lucky to have you.
Yeah. I hope so, I mean.
It's tough. Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough to get in. It's like, you never know. Your nature's cool too, I guess. All right.
The hair could put it over the edge, though. That's the edge you have.
Yeah, that's true.
We wish you the best in whatever the future holds for you and, and know that you have a bright future because that was an amazing piece.
Well, thanks.
What's your senior year ELO plan?
Probably something similar, I guess.
I have an idea. I'm not kidding with the, all right, you got it again, I guess.
Ryan, the thing that I like about this one is that it used resources that we had. Not, you know, outside experiences are excellent, but I think this one allowed Mrs. Ray to use her skills with the student in a unique way to help him.
And she, she drove, she drove that. Jackson definitely ran with it. Incredible. But, yeah, having that, that support within the school and having the teacher so passionate about it was a really awesome experience. Let's see if Emily's. You guys see it? There it is.
This is lovely.
It's, we'll see if it catches up. But it's great because she's, she's, she's going off a picture she saw, she's doing the work from memory and she'll, she'll review it and make sure that it's to the customer's specs and you'll see her kind of reach that point.
So I'm taking a look at the photo again and. The yellow roses are actually not in a bunch there, go around the arrangement. So I just gotta gently. Take those out.
I'll have the rest of this load. And then, just wanted to talk about ELO, ELOs we have in, in the works for, for next year at this point. We have a filmmaking ELO. We have a student who's starting filming this summer, writing, directing, getting his crew together, the whole thing, doing his budget, still working out all of the details on that. We have another student who is going beyond the level of service age. She's doing career exploration in education. So she's gonna spend half of the year in the elementary school, half of the year in the middle school. She's, she has two teachers that have signed up to take her on, work, work on her, work with her on lesson planning and classroom management, giving her an opportunity to work in with small groups of students. So that's really exciting. And there's one over the summer, a student is going to the New Hampshire Cadet Academy, the advanced portion of that. And he's going to be, be journaling about that experience. He's going to be writing a speech for the last day, using that as his final reflection and then he'll have to pass their practical exam as part of that elective career exploration credit, so.
What is that program?
The New Hampshire Police Academy Cadet Training Program.
Wow.
So, so that's pretty exciting. And that could turn into a number of, of other opportunities too, so. All right, we've got enough to make it through. When we held the Cooperative Transition Mini Conference at Exeter High School this year, floor mentors put together the three pieces for us to put at our registration tables.
And if the stem is too long and you're having trouble putting it in, you just cut
Pat Cowick, the owner, the floor mentors, put together one, one of the pieces.
So we also have something called guard pedals, which are the pedals that get all kind of banged up as they're being transported to where they need to be. So we take the guard pedals off.
She should have a bigger knife.
Yes.
Three seconds.
There it is.
So that was fun, fun to see, checking in throughout the year and seeing what she's finally come up with. It's a really cool experience. That's all I have for you tonight. Do you have any questions at all? Anything?
How do you, how do you, do you drop in and check in on students now or now and then and just ask how things are going?
Yeah. They check in with me daily. They call my office when they get to the site for attendance. They do, most of them do weekly journal entries. Jackson did an hours log, so every time he sat down at the computer and got in that program, he had a start and end time and a, and a blurb about what he did during that time. And I check in semi-regularly with community partners to see how things are going, to check in, so. But yeah, it's been.
Now, kids have a, do they have a minimum amount of hours they, they have to do in, or is it project-based?
Say we're trying to get away from the hours thing a little bit, but we, we calculated about how many hours it would take to get a quarter credit, a semester credit, those kinds of things, so. When you look at the amount of time Emily spent at that shop throughout the year from October until, until now, it was every other day for a while. Actually, it's been every day since October for an hour and a half. So that's a solid number of hours.
To your point, Ryan, I think the idea is not so much to count the hours, but to really look at the skills, right? So she's demonstrating that she can work from a photo to successfully arrange flowers. Your student is demonstrating that she can from start to finish, work through transactions, maintain the log for that particular property, do all of the work associated with that massively. So that theoretically she could do all of them if she were a full-time employee in some capacity in the future.
And I think one of the overriding pieces too is that professionalism. I mean, it's, to some degree you can get that in, in the classroom, but not like a real-world experience, totally different, so.
How many students will grow?
We have five ELOs now, six. So I'm hoping to double that for next year.
And my experience is that it will double and it will probably quadruple after that.
I was in, in the library today with Mr. Anderson. He was helping me shrink that video down to three minutes. And the student asked what we were doing and we explained that it was an ELO. He goes, oh, I've heard of that. It's the first time someone has said, oh, I've heard of that. How do I do it? So, that was, that was validating.
I would think a lot of these students would be, change, kind of change of page.
Yeah.
Some of them are paid.
Yeah.
The learning new skills.
Three, three of them right now are paid, yeah. An opportunity to get in, in some of the trades too as they, they turn 18 for those students. I mean, the opportunity's there, so. They need, they need workers.
How do you deal, maybe this is too deep of a question, but how do you deal with like the, the employment-based aspects of things? Are they on comp when they're there? Are they on?
From a liability standpoint?
Yeah, all that sort of stuff.
We have a school-to-work binder as part of our, our liability insurance.
Okay.
And that gets sent to, to community partners.
Yeah, most can't be like on the factory floor in some industries, but you may be, you know.
Right. But there are workarounds.
Exactly.
There's a whole list of things you can get waivers for, so.
Let's say, let's say it was local garage.
That's, that's tough, but yeah.
Is, is that a, do, do we, you go to the local garage and say, is the program that we've got?
Right.
Or do they come to you or how do that work?
So my first year here, we weren't necessarily doing ELOs like, because we had some independent studies. So students that had, had space in their schedule could go to a site like that. And I had a student down at Cruzex. He was working there as, just doing oil changes.
Yep.
But it was an opportunity for him to, to get some more hands-on experience with, not the real dangerous, or.
Those kinds of things that can do with SSD.
Right. Right, exactly. But to do it on a regular basis. He was going to SSD, but he had a block at the end of the day, so he would go down there.
Can you talk a little bit, Ryan, about the community outreach efforts you've put in? Because I know they've been extensive this year and you've been, been building up.
Sure, sure. So, part of that, I feel this year was, was the career day we did in April, just reaching out to all of those, all those area businesses, letting them know that there are students that want to learn about what they do. So, I think that was an opportunity. And the feedback I got from those presenters was that, you know, these students are eager to, to get more career-related experience. That, that was a big part of it. And it's, it's, it still feels one-to-one. The, the student is interested and I'll go find a partner. But as that happens and word gets out between businesses, it will grow. We have the New Market Business Association, we partner with, so they know what we're doing. So when I, when I have, when I reach out to a business, they know what's going on. I'm sorry, I didn't prepare anything for that, that piece. Yeah. Any?
No, I think this, this exemplifies the piece about being, having students be college and career-ready, right? Students need to have options in today's world and this is an opportunity for students to capitalize on their interests. You know, Catherine has done so in Spanish, Jackson in music, you know, the other students you've seen here tonight. But to gain academic credit for that and be, you know, ready to work and/or go on to pursue further study in that area. And sometimes they might decide, hey, this isn't for me, but how much better to learn that now?
We have one of the service aide we have going down to the elementary school goes, I like working with kids, but not, not this much. And he's been great. He's been a good sport about it, but that's not his, his path. So it's good to experience that before they put all that money into secondary education. Awesome.
Well, Ryan, thank you for all that you've done to make this program grow and we look forward to hearing more growth in the future and.
I look forward exactly to hearing you.
Having students and employers come back and present to us in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. The next thing that we'll move to is the junior senior high roofing project and traffic lights. We're gonna go to Greg's part.
Great.
So he doesn't have to. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I can find it.
Just further down.
Here we go.
So you have two memos in your packet. One is regarding the junior senior high roof project. That was a project we identified when we did our roof study last summer. So this one was identified as needing to be accomplished this fiscal year. It is separate from the building project. It is a roof that is not being touched.
It is a roof that is not being touched otherwise through the building project. Total cost of that, $69,900. So we are seeking board approval to move forward with that project.
How far into the package is it?
It's, it's just like this far.
Right after the minutes. And before the New Hampshire Department of Education. Now, if I was reading this thing correctly, that we thought it was gonna be 49, but that was without the abatement of the asbestos. But this 69 includes the asbestos abatement?
Yes.
Does the same company do it, the asbestos abatement, or is that somebody else?
It's a different company.
So the asbestos is baited by the same company that's doing the roof. They have their own certified asbestos abatement professionals on staff to handle this.
Got it. Where's Tecta from?
Tecta is actually a nationwide company. They have a place in Portland, somewhere in Massachusetts, and a few other locations.
And this, this one would be out of which office?
They're gonna, the guy I'm working with is out of their Portland office.
I see.
And how many bids?
We only received one bid.
How, can you just briefly explain where the advertising is made, how they're made?
Yep, we do several things. First thing, we send all of our packages out to what's referred to as Construction Weekly, the Construction Journal, the Dodge Reports. And what they do is they publish it nationally in their local systems for state and New Hampshire. And then if you subscribe to it, you can look at, you know, multiple states or whatever. We do that. We also put a legal ad out in the newspaper, basically saying, hey, we have this project out to bid. We post it on our school website.
What papers do we use?
I'd have to ask Penny to be exact, but I know, I think Seacoast is one of them. Because I've seen it on Seacoast online when I've looked at it. So I'm not 100% sure of exactly all the papers because it's handled by, what's it?
Yep, it's the Seacoast media group.
So, there's a rhetorical question, but so a Manchester roofing company wouldn't necessarily see this?
Well, they should, if a lot of them subscribe to those reporting agencies. We also send it to a New Hampshire-only reporting agency that works a lot on just municipality work. So they're on top of that. We get emails from them asking for the RFPs and information on it. So we do send those all out. I also go through and I go and Google and look for any contractors that I can find in the area, get their email addresses, and email it to them directly, so that I'm trying to get as much saturation as possible. And that's kind of the format we've been following to try to get bids on projects.
Great. Do you know these guys, this firm at all, Tecta?
I've worked with them in the past. They, they bid on the town's preventive maintenance program. And we're low bidder on the preventive maintenance program for the town facilities, so.
Roofing preventative?
Preventative roofing maintenance, yes.
Roofers straight out these days, is that?
We are struggling to get bids on anything right now. I've got two projects, town side, I have zero bids on. And we put it out twice. So it's, it just can't get people to bid things right now. I think everybody's booked pretty solid and the market's up and busy, so when that happens, it's hard to get people to bid. Roofing contract is usually a booking in January.
And a lot of smaller roofing companies don't have asbestos abatement staff.
That is correct.
So you're looking at the larger firms typically who can supply that.
Do the, the process and the policy for bidding and so forth, the same for the town as it is for the school?
We do follow the same bidding process.
Same, same, same deal.
Yep. We'd like to get at least three bids, but like I said, I've had multiple, I think I can only have one project between the town and school that had five bids, and the rest of them have been one or twos.
Did this come in roughly where you thought it would? Is it in, within budget or within estimate?
The roofing replacement itself came in within budget, but when I put the original cost projections together, we hadn't had the results from roof sampling to find out if it's asbestos, so we found asbestos under that roof, which then kicks it into another whole cost factor. So the difference from what we originally projected to what we have now is taking in the fact that that asbestos has to be removed, has to be handled and disposed of properly.
What did we originally, pre-asbestos, before we found that out?
We were about 40, I think 49,000 is what I had.
So it's like roughly 20 extra thousand. In, in the grand scheme of the whole project, does this come out of the contingency, or is this something carved out of?
This is a capital, this is a regular capital project.
Okay.
A regular on, pretty capital.
Okay.
And I suspect that this is rubber roofing?
Yes, it, the existing roof is also rubber, but it was put over the top of a built-up roof that contained. So we have to remove the rubber, the insulation, and then the old roofing on top of that. We certainly don't want to leave that product in place.
My point is, coming out of the industry that you've come out of, I'm sure you have a per-square-foot price in mind.
Per-square-foot runs, depending on what we have to do, and I'm gonna give you a pretty big range because it all depends on what's really below there, but we run as cheap as $12 a square and as much as $27 a square, depending on for cases like this where we have to take asbestos out.
So your experience with prices, this is not a double the price?
No.
Even though we're, you wouldn't?
It would, it would be right in where lying where we had if we didn't have to deal with the asbestos.
So over the last 10 years, we've done roofing on that roof. I don't know how many, I've got all the times. So what you're saying is every time we put a layer of rubber on there, we just, we were just covering old rubber?
So the, we've tested all of the roofs up there. With the exception of the gymnasium addition, all the roofs up there were covered over asbestos. So when the last grouping, which I think there's some 2006, some 8, 10, I have it on my report.
Yeah, we had, like, every year we did a part of the roof.
What they did is instead of stripping it down to and removing the old built-up material, they, they left that and then roofed over the top of that.
So underneath all the new roof would be the asbestos?
Correct.
So they need to give us certificates of what they do with the materials afterwards?
We do. What happened, a couple of things happened. First thing, we have to, I require a chain of custody. So it has to be handled in a certain way, it has to be disposed a certain way, and we have to have a chain of custody, which we keep on file. And that's not just for the asbestos, but that's for any of the materials that come off of that roof. So we keep those pieces. Then we also get a warranty. In the original specifications, I called for a 20-year warranty on this roof. And as we go forward, any roof that we have to place, we're gonna do, we would do in that same methodology to make sure that we're protecting ourselves.
Is it, is it a workmanship warranty of like one year and then materials for 20?
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's, it's material defect. State requires a one-year guarantee for labor materials, and then it goes into the manufacturer. So if the rubber compound breaks down, or the seam materials break down, then that would kick in those particular warranties.
So I'm not sure what record-keeping was in the past for all that sort of stuff. I mean, how do we, this is, this is a broader question, but it's good to know, it'd be sort of the beginning of all this work. Is, how do we keep track of all those warranties and the documents and stuff in the file?
So for instance, that report that you received eight, 10 months ago from me? That gets updated. And in that report also is the warranty term and when it expires, as well as the square footage, the cost to replace, and all of that is in that report. So what will happen is, hopefully you'll authorize this, I will update that report and say, okay, we have a 20-year warranty on this based on this installation date. And then we, in the files, which I build for each project, when we get the warranty card, for lack of a better description, it's a certificate, that goes into that file also. So that can be referenced down the road, if necessary. But the spreadsheet should be able to be available. And I keep those. And I do provide you, and you will get these reports every year from me, so you'll know what's going on.
I'm glad you've got the experience of overseeing stuff like that with one bid. Because at least, I get it. I mean, the demand's up there and all it, but some of our vendors right now are, I can't use the word hoes, but whatever that is, are so, are so overbidding.
Well, the market, the market is heavy.
They'll take the cream of the crop and.
Right now, people are bidding projects. They're, they're already booked solid, so the numbers they've put on some projects are high, high because they already have enough work, so they look at it, hey, if I get this, great, I'm gonna make some money.
Exactly. Good. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
And as we go on, since we've done this rubber roof all these years, do we look into putting something else on that roof?
Well, let's back up. You didn't put rubber roof on the roofs.
Okay.
So you have two rubber roofs up there. The rest of the roofs are a built-up, modified-built-up roof that was put on, which is, I think you'd have people argue about quality comparatively. What it is, is an old-style way of doing things where they did asphalt and built it up, and then you've got gravel on top of it. That's what was put over the top of those asbestos roofs. So of all the roof lines we have up there, only two are rubber. And both of those are slated to be replaced because of age. They've aged out and they're starting to, you know, the elasticity in the rubber is, you drop a screwdriver, it goes right through it, so.
Well, it's, it's just the Band-Aid effect that we've had over the years. That's why I'm looking, maybe if we do something, if we put it in the CIP and look at doing something different as, as we have this new part of the building and slowly updating.
So your new part of the building will be ED?
There are requests in the CIP even for next year, and that's part of the mid-20-year-plus plan we have to submit to the state at the end of the building project.
So are we looking to do something different, though, or are we keep the same stuff that we've been doing?
The roofs that you have right now that.
Well, I can't speak to what you're doing, but only what, but only the last year and a half that we've been doing.
I can answer that. The new roofs that are going on in the areas where we have new roofs will be those 20-year warranty rubber roofs. The new roofs that we're gonna do ourselves, which are two of them, will be those rubber roofs. The other roofs are still under warranty. So the plan is, is to, to, you know, work on that life cycle, and when they get to that point, then we go. So your elementary school, for instance, is all a rubber roof, and that has been there since, other than the addition, has been there since installation. So we now have a full preventive maintenance program to keep those for longer periods.
So Greg, oftentimes, as you know, the, the problems arise mostly in the installation, not so much materials like windows and roofing and all that. How do we, you know, I think it's probably, it's probably a one-year. That's typical on workmanship, right? How do we know, how are we sort of keeping track of all that and say, boy, we better get up there? It's been nine months since they put this on. I want to take a final look before this workmanship warranty runs out. Are we, is there a way?
So what happens is I do regular annual inspections on all of our roofs.
Yep.
Okay? Number one. Number two, we also now are gonna be contracting regular preventive maintenance. And as part of those, even those new roofs, those companies will be going up to do a preventive maintenance check. And they will identify, and they have to give me a written report with pictures every year. So we will be able to create those plans and processes and, and say, hey, listen, we know the warranty's coming, the labor warranty's coming up. I'll be up on that roof. What's going on? Is the seams holding up? Is the roof holding up? Is there any protrusions in the roof? Do we need to address? And we'll address those then and there. And then our preventive maintenance company will continue to keep the upkeep on that, kind of like changing the oil on your car kind of thing.
Any other questions about anything?
I seek a motion to approve the, award the contract of $69,900 to Tecta America for the roof number three in the junior, senior high school.
So move.
A motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. Albrecht, to approve the awarding of this contract. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you.
The second thing, Meredith, is the school safety zone signals.
Yes, I mentioned this at, I think at the budget committee meeting last week. We, at the request of Officer Stevens and in conjunction with some ongoing neighbor reports of the fact that the traffic signals were intermittently not functioning. There is one existing control, which is older software that is more basically obsolete at this point, that controls all three traffic lights and has to be manually maintained by, at this point, our school resource officer, who runs it on an old PC. These also are aging and somewhat outdated, so the technology has shifted. And because we have problems, like every time a large truck goes over the road, sometimes the traffic signal stops working. We felt that with the timing of the construction, that it made sense to look at replacing these now for safety reasons in the school zone area. The total cost for that, you see, we've, we've projected $17,668. That includes installation. That's going with the, that's going with the Elektroniteknics Corporation model. And that's the three sites that we currently have school zone safety signals at. The Marlin Controls addition has a speed indicator as well, so that's an additional cost. We didn't feel that was strictly necessary. The new signals will run on solar power rather than electric, so there will be a slight offset, I guess, to our operating budget as a result. But really, this is a safety issue from our perspective. So given the fiscal report that Lisa shared with you at the last regular business meeting, we feel that we have funds available remaining in the operating budget this year to utilize to fund this, and we would request that you authorize us to move forward.
Where are the signals?
Grant Road 152 and, well, both on 152.
It's the one that says school, not just a blinking.
Not the crosswalk.
Correct, these are the.
This is not the one we just crossed.
No, no.
That's what I thought.
That is still functioning. That was blinking well today.
Yeah.
So for Greg, the whole thing on this is the $17,668?
Yes, and we projected the other costs for installation because until, I actually dig down there and find out what's below, but I'm pretty comfortable with what we have there for cost projections.
So just, just the first one on the memo, it says Electroteknics Corporation, eight, almost $9,000, that's for all three lights?
That is for all three lights.
And then below is just the installation?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And that, that would be the same regardless of which light company we went with?
Correct.
Right?
Okay. Why, so why, why the big price difference? Is it more bells and whistles on the Marlin?
Well, first thing, the Marlin system included a, a speed indicator.
Well, it said it doesn't.
The Marlin Controls included.
This says less.
It says less speed indicator, $15,000.
Right, yeah. If we take their speed indicator out, that's the price. Their actual price.
$23.1.
Yeah.
That's a mistake.
So.
So, good question. So why are they so significantly different?
It's like anything. It all depends on, you know, the different type of material you're buying, the different product.
I have the specs on both that you'd like to.
No, no, I was just.
Yeah, I mean, I will say the Elektronics, I've watched that before, but Corporation is the same Corporation that we use for our crosswalk signals right now. And so I was also looking to try to keep in, you know, I figure one manufacturer might be an easier thing to deal with. The other thing is, we're buying this directly from the manufacturer, wherein in Marlin, there is a distributor in between. So.
That's the difference.
Yeah. And I'd rather buy the signals and pay, have them installed so that we don't have to pay an additional markup for somebody to do it. Yeah, it does make us the warranty holder on the signal, but at the end of the day, I go back to the manufacturer.
Now Greg, did we do the same deal here? We went to that Universal New Hampshire bidding?
We did not. We did not in this case because we really don't have a, in this, I'm looking to buy a product only. So what we did is we researched it online, well, I did. Research, I say we, but we is a school, I guess. Researched online, the vendors out there, and solicited pricing from the vendors, and these are the two that came back to me.
This is really a product quote rather than a bid, so we got multiple quotes for comparable.
So the bid would be the additional cost would go out for the day.
Yeah, what I'll be doing that, if you authorize this, I'll be working with, creating an RFP for installation. And that will go out to a competitive bid situation. Hopefully we get. We've also, we've also talked about possibly being able to do this in-house with the public works department. So I've got to explore that, which would then give, save us a fair amount of money, but I've got to explore it a little deeper.
What do you have to do? You, the wiring's already there, right, for the?
This does not require wiring. This is a, these are solar-operated.
No wiring at all, then?
Well, I'll then put it together.
What happens when it snows on the solar thingy?
It actually, if you get the specs, which I have the specs here, it will tell you it's designed to last a certain number of hours without the ability.
Otherwise, you send Wayne out to scrape it off?
Well, we could do that, I suppose. And I also didn't opt for the big. And I also didn't opt for the big software system that you can buy, which would go to my cellphone and all of that, 'cause I just didn't see that there was a, for $3,000 more, I didn't see that there was an added advantage to have that.
Do we, in part of this, I don't want to just spend too much time on these things, but I mean, do we have to cap off the electric?
Yes, that's all, if you'll look in there, I said, I have electrical disconnect and demolition. So that's actually discontinuing electrical service that's in those locations.
And this is remotely programmable, is that it?
It is programmable at each unit.
Yeah.
There is an option to do a full, you know, internet-type-based system, where we have to have transponders there and all of that, and I opted not to look at that, just because it adds a lot of cost to it. And to be honest, if the signal doesn't work, we're gonna hear anyways, so.
Would we, I wouldn't see we would need to do much other than daylight savings time.
Times of schools you program in there, holidays you can program in there, and on the actual paperwork, it gives you the amount. It's quite a few different times that we can put in there on a 12-month period. So we would do that, and of course, you know, adjust it annually if there's a, you know, change.
I guess, I guess what I'm getting at with all that, I just wonder over time, you know, what, there's a balance between price and, you know, functionality and all that stuff. But, you know, the holidays is a good one, right? You know, they can fluctuate at times of school. I guess that the, wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if it went off and said, you know, started blinking on a, you know.
Slows people down.
Police would probably like that, too, but, but I'm just sort of thinking of the, of the person who has to, who's gonna, who's gonna be programming this? Will that be your function or somebody's?
Well, I actually, I'm initially, I've asked the company that sells it to us, they have a local rep that's willing to come up and show me how to program it. I thought Wayne and I, maybe Jason as our IT guy, too, just haven't, I believe in backups.
It's probably not rocket science, but I just-
Maybe Red.
What's that?
Maybe Red.
It's, it's, from what I read and went online with both of them, they're really quite user-friendly.
And this is all the same people that put up the crosswalks?
Yeah, those are Dec, Elect-
L-Tech.
Never mind. Electro, Electrotronica, electronics. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna botch that all to pieces, I'm sorry. We're gonna go to Marlin now, because I can say Marlin.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKenney to-
To the replacement of the school zone signal, three locations in town, and award the contract to L-Tech.
Any discussion of that motion from Mr. Zink? One second from Ms. McKenney.
I actually started paying attention to the sign on Grant, 'cause I actually, I might have been pulled over a couple of times on that one.
So we, uh-
And it doesn't work. And you said, when the big trucks, which, there are a lot of big trucks going by right now. And so there are certain times it's working and the times it's not.
I think it's definitely an assessment.
Yeah, I do, I agree with you. So I'm glad it's coming out of the operating budget.
Thanks for your research. Very welcome.
Any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving this allocation, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Go home.
So we have one more issue.
Zoomed out, go home.
Oh, well, the second one is, yes. We have another one on your agenda, and then we have one other. That we want to formally review. So while that's coming down, this is a, this, this is building project. So this is a change order relative to the fire lane widening requested by the fire marshal at the elementary school project. We got the cost for that just on Friday, and we've painted out, I wasn't able to turn that around for you, to adjust the agenda, but we also have, so that amount, let me back up. The approved plans for the elementary school, which had been reviewed by our local public works and fire chief and code enforcement and architects and all of the above, called for a 16-foot driveway at the elementary school. And that had also had preliminary oversight from the fire marshal's office. But upon their final review, they requested that that be widened to be a 20-foot driveway to accommodate fire trucks passing one another, as I understand.
It's correct. So the one fire truck can be parked, another one can drive around.
And so we made some effort to push back on that. However, this was termed non-negotiable by the fire marshal's office. So the change for that is $20,442, which is available to us in our contingency funds. The second relates to a soil site condition issue at the elementary school, where the soil is basically all sand. And if you read through this little paragraph, we had a stormwater infiltration system being installed at the elementary school. This is one of the pieces on the McGrath property. In order to meet the DES specifications, we had to have a drainage rate of six to 10 inches an hour through that infiltration. The existing drainage rate with our sandy, or sand, I don't want you to wanna call it sandy soil, it's just sand, was 42 to 56 inches an hour. And so this had, this was the email I sent out a week or two ago regarding, what do we call it? Needing to-
Unsuitable soil remediation.
Well, I did, but there is a term for it, essentially remediate, but we had to mix dirt into the sand. So there was an unsuitable soil allowance built into our project costs, so we will use that. But we will also require an additional $11,176 from owner's contingency in order to fund that cost. So these are both within our scope. These are exactly the kinds of things that contingency funds exist for. It will not be our last request for contingency funds, I am sure, but-
And this, we kind of knew when the DOT came and talked to us, we knew we were gonna get you something. So this isn't unexpected.
This is actually a DES.
DES.
We're in a fire, a fire marshal, a DES.
Both DES and the fire marshal. These are not wholly unexpected. But again, we just got the final pricing at today's construction meeting on the soil cost today, and on Friday, the cost for the driveway, additional 4 feet.
On the, on the driveway, the width, it said of the originally approved design, approved by?
The original design was approved by our local authorities having jurisdiction, which is public works, fire, and our code enforcement. We did a preliminary with a consulting company and the state fire marshal's office. So that's where we were, and then the fire marshal's office came back and said, no, we want a 20-foot.
So what are the factors, I'm just, so I know, what are the factors that lead to that? What, you know, you have a, it must have been something they saw that said, no, you guys need a 20-foot roadway here, not a 16-foot. It seems, it would seem to be a standard thing unless they're, I guess it's probably about getting trucks, fire trucks down?
Well, 16-foot is a single-pass fire truck lane, and what they're requiring is a ability to park a fire truck and have a fire truck pass. So in order to do that, you have to widen it. They have oversight on the completed drawings before. So what happens is, when the drawings are all completed and everything, we do all the permanent submissions, even though the preliminary might come say, yeah, that looks good, they then have the right to say, no, based on this, 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 this is what we're expecting. And that's exactly what happened. They expected this and-
And our local code enforcement and fire chief slash public works director were at the meeting with the fire marshal when this change was, was requested. I mean, they, they advocated for the opportunity to maintain the original proposal, but at the end of the day, this is the fire marshal's call.
Right. It just, it just seemed strange if they were in on it from the fire marshal's office, at least on preliminary review, they wouldn't have seen this. I mean, they, I mean, if you need to get a fire truck parked and one going beside it, I understand the 20-foot width for that, but I just, why wouldn't they know that?
They won't do a full review of everything until 100% completed package.
Right.
And that doesn't happen until you get right to the point where you're putting it out to bid and everything. So what happens is, when we sent them, submitted the completed package, they have months to review it, and they have months to get back to us. The preliminary stuff, they basically do an ancillary look at it. Yeah, it looks good. Now we're gonna find two of them. And that's exactly what happens.
Not arguing with you, Greg, here, but I'm just-
No, no, no.
Expressing a little annoyance at the state that they, nothing changed. You know, the school is where it is, the road is where it is, the trucks are as wide as they are, you know, but-
I certainly understand, trust me. I, I don't like coming to you saying, I need this money to be a wide roadway, knowing that a bus can go down it, so.
And, and, sorry, the other thing, the, the, the-
Soil conditions.
I should know this from family members or soil people, but it's a big difference here between the rate of flow, right? Is that something we would have picked up on in a soil study or?
So as we dig the pits, and we have certain elevations and do test boreings, which are a random selection of a given area, okay? You can move 10 feet over, and it's a completely different soil. Well, in this particular case, we removed the top layer, and literally from that back corner forward, not ahead of that, where we did a bunch of soil testing, is literally just sand. And I think at one meeting I said, why don't we get some seagulls and put some water out there, we have our own beach. It is that sandy. And so what happens is, is that we have to amend it to be able to deal with that. And you won't find that in-
Amending, that is the word I was looking for.
Oh, soil amendment, yes. Sorry. We, we have to deal with that, but we're not gonna be able to find it all, because until you dig it out, you can't find everything that's there. It's a sampling of what's in a given area. Kind of like the clay we found.
Now, where is this on the site, again, where, where this area?
It's the McGrath site, and if you actually go all the way towards the very back of that property, there is a drainage system that's installed now that handles that. And that was, majority of that entire space was just that sand.
State just doesn't want the water going in too fast into the-
Yeah, when it comes down to that, we have to control, what you don't want is the water to run fast, because then it overwhelms, in this case, Moonlight Brook and anything that the district areas with that, and we don't want that. What we wanna do is have it go in very slowly, so that the ground water table and the area can handle the volume of water. What we, and you may have driven by and seen these giant orangey-looking stacks, what we basically do is we build a pond in the ground. And so as the water comes into that, we slow the water rate out, so that it can slowly trickle into the water table. It can slowly go out to Moonlight Brook. And so we build a big pond to kind of slow that all down. Well, unfortunately, the grade, the existing subgrade was there was, I mean, they do a perk test. In the old days, you used to take a whole, dig a five-yard bucket, pour it in there, and they'd count how long it takes to run. Well, you can pour a five-yard button bucket right there, and it's gone. You can, you don't have time to count, it's already gone. So that was the problem. It goes too fast, which means it impacts too much.
Is this one of the ponds that we gotta maintain and clean out?
These are one of the subsurface areas we have to maintain, yes.
And these numbers are Ekman numbers, I guess, the 20 and the 11? Okay.
I don't wanna dwell on it, but Greg, as you know, in the industry, money's made on change orders.
It is.
That's where, that's where vendors make their money.
Or can be, I shouldn't say it is, that's-
But it is. That's where they make their money. And so my question, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on it, but the $20,000 bid, I assume, came from the vendor we've already selected?
On the, it is the existing, it's the existing site vendor that's doing both pieces?
Right.
Which, which is a, is a local company that's-
Yeah, and you know it better than I. That's a single bid, they came up with it, and I just hope we keep our eyes on it.
I do. I look at the numbers to say, is this reasonable? And I will tell you, the amount of work that they had to do, not only to remove, which you probably see giant piles out there, the soil that we had to put back or amended soil, had to be blended off-site to meet the requirements. So they actually were at one of the local pits, mixing dirt together, for lack of a better description, and then hauling it.
I was talking about the first part.
I was, I was referring to the, I was referring to the additional paving.
Additional, we're actually not paving more, we're creating a supported, lack of better descriptions, shoulder. It's, it's a traffic-rated gravel shoulder. If we were to pave that section in the several hundred feet of roadway, that number would be considerably higher.
I'm just, I'm just, just making a point.
Yeah, point taken.
We do, I do look at them. Is this a reasonable amount, and does it meet, and we use, as long as you're familiar with means-
It's a long run.
We use it in projected numbers based on means data to say, this amount of feet, this type of fill, that kind of thing, and see if it's within those ranges.
So Greg, just one last one on the road. Is it 20 feet the whole way around the bus loop?
It is. It does, it changes right directly behind the school, but the reason it does is we also have a sidewalk there, and we have a buffer zone that's already there, so we didn't have to bring it to that. So when it comes around the cemetery, it's still 20 feet until it hits that area that has the sidewalks.
Okay. Does that change, I know, I think I can recall on the opposite side of the school from where McGrath is, we, I think we worked in some parking spaces there. Does that muck up that all, that, that, does it bring it in towards the school?
No, on the opposite side of the elementary school, we have a parking area, and it doesn't affect that at all.
Okay.
Any more questions or discussion?
We'll move to make a motion to accept the two bids for a total of $40,618 for the change orders.
Second.
I think the number's slightly off, I think so. I think it's 31.
Yeah.
It's 31.
It's better than my number.
31, 618.
Just did that by hand, so I feel good.
With that new number, I second.
So we have a motion from Ms. McKenney to accept the two change orders in the amount of $31,618, and a second from Mr. Kennison. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving those change orders, say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you very much.
I just have a lot of stuff, so. One last question.
Can I answer it?
Yeah, okay. It's not a trick one. What, I remember we talked about it during the facilities meeting, but what is, what are the various levels of approval for change orders?
We're working on that right now.
I thought we decided during the facility-
I don't think we finalized that.
We didn't, and we wanna finalize that at the meeting next week, but-
Oh, I thought, 'cause I, the number 10,000?
We discussed it, and I don't think we ever decided.
But we didn't-
We didn't make a final decision on that.
These, we guys are the ones that-
Well, anything over $10,000 requires board approval, so we feel it's prudent right now to go that way until we have other directions.
Okay, so this one could have-
Just over the threshold, but we're sticking by it.
So you're doing the 10 to whatever now? Gotcha.
Yeah, anything up to 10, again, I don't, I don't think the only, there hasn't been anything, actually.
We had the $7,600 sidewalk alternance that was accepted.
That was a, that was a change order approved by the building committee back in February, but the contract hadn't been amended, so there were no additional charges.
So you're gonna do something, you're gonna say up to $5,000, Greg can approve, or some, whatever.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And then the last thing, I believe, is the approval of the $3,200 from the sale of the metal storage building. Forgot about that. Yep.
Like, make a motion to approve the one bid for the, is that correct?
No.
So what we're actually asking you to do is to, we, I wrote it out sort of more or less the way we're hoping to have you think about it, which would be to accept the $3,200 to expend in support of the district's capital project. So we'd like the funds received from that sale to go back into the project funds.
Oh, 'cause we already approved the sale, it, gotcha, gotcha.
Unanticipated revenue.
So you're gonna put it where?
We'd like to put it towards the project funds, towards the building project, into those dollars.
I think stained glass window of Obama.
So Lisa, you said it's on unanticipated revenue. What about the $12,000 we got from the miscalculation on the?
We'll come back to that, we'll have something else.
Sorry.
But yes.
Okay.
So Al, you accept that amendment, I mean, to your motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to accept $3,200 from the sale of the metal storage building, and to be expended in support of the district's capital project.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Zink, a second for Mr. Kennison to spend, to allocate these $3,200 of unanticipated revenue. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Greg, when are they taking that out?
They're actually, it was supposed to last week, but he's starting, actually, Tommy was gonna be there at 9:00 to start. He said, by, by this weekend, it should, should be gone.
Where do we, where are we putting our stuff in there in the interim?
We've already got it in storage containers across, storage container across the street.
Thank you, Greg, for all this information tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Now go home. Go home, enjoy the evening.
Yeah, you too.
Now we'll get back to the agenda. Meredith, if you would like to make your superintendent's report, that's sort of where we find ourselves.
Sure, so I'm gonna try not to double up on anything that Catherine already mentioned, but, did you mention the variety show? I think you skipped that, but we had a great variety show at the junior/senior high, I think Friday the 18th, or somewhere around there in May. And some great student performers, including Jackson and his band, who took home first prize at that event. There was an additional parent meeting at the junior/senior high regarding the eighth to ninth grade transition and the plans for-
grade transition and the plans for ninth grade course offerings. We had National Honor Society induction. Elementary concert and parade, you already covered. We have an abutters meeting next week, followed by a building committee meeting.
Is that on the fifth?
Tuesday the 5th at 6:00 PM. Catherine mentioned awards night and graduation. So there will be parking in the lot across the street from the junior senior high school for that event, and I will swing back to that in just a moment.
What time do you abutters meet?
Six o'clock.
It's on the bottom, I think, of the first page.
I probably brought five of these, but I only brought four, I'll pass them down. Last week, Chief Justice John Broderick was here and spoke to students at the junior senior high about mental health. Yeah, any observations, comments, you were there?
I think it was very relevant to things that are going on right now, and I think it was much needed as well to be able to kind of sit down and have an open conversation about mental health, where, yes, we get some of that in our health classes, our psychology classes, but I think it's a good way to break down some of those barriers that we create when they don't need to be there. And when an open conversation actually facilitates helping a lot of people. So it was, it was a really nice opportunity to have him there, and then a lot of students were able to talk to him after, myself included, which was a really great experience as well. So, yeah, I think we as an entire student body thank him for being able to come and talk to us today.
Nothing more I can say about that. Thank you, Catherine. We did receive news today that the district was receiving an additional $11,845.09 in past due adequacy aid due to some calculation errors at the state level. To Mike's point, that is unanticipated revenue. And that will go to our funds for this year, will contribute to fund balance essentially. Anything that's unexpended, it will contribute to fund balance, and we'll act on that later. Want to acknowledge a few students from the Seacoast School of Technology, Newmarket students, who were recently recognized at the Career and Technical Student Organization State Conference. So Cody Federhoff from Newmarket was recognized in physical therapy with a silver medal. Zoe Paps in business services marketing for third place in the role play and second place in a role play. And then inducted into the National Technical Honor Society, where Tommy Tavasuk in education careers and Eric Diaz in pre-engineering. So congratulations to those students. Some great accomplishments. I have a whole list of other things that we included in the packet for you that I just want to briefly point out. One is the Special Education District Report, so those come to us each year. This is based on the 2016-17 school year, so think back to last year. But this just shows you sort of where our district falls compared to the state targets and the state performance overall. And so I won't walk you through all of those areas, but at a future workshop, we'd like to have Erica McNeil, our Director of Student Services, attend and share some information with you about not only the report, but about the special education program in general.
It was interesting data to look at in this format, things that, you know, about percentage of students on ADP that are graduating with a regular diploma and things of that nature, and our numbers are fair, higher than, substantially higher than the state in that area and other areas. So I would love to have Erica come talk to us about it, because it was interesting.
Yeah, I would too. I, this, this whole area of special education keeps, keeps our budget alive in a lot of respects. We seem to spend a lot for transportation and various services. So not to comment too much on it, but it is such a hunk of our, our budget to know more about it would be.
Yeah. And this reporting is part of, you know, the obligation in order to receive our federal funds that come to us in special education. So the state collects this data, we report all of this data to them. And there are some, definitely some things we would want to bring to yours and the public's attention when we walk through it. Also included in your packet is a couple page handout, I think it may have copied back to back, just about voting. So State Representative Michael Cahill worked with some folks to put these together to make available to graduating seniors at the junior senior high. So it's a nonpartisan, just information about what you need to do to register to vote, how to go about doing that, and links to the town website that give you the information on where to register and when the polls will be open. And then the final thing we included for you came from Education Redesign. It is a report on competency-based education. I just thought it was helpful background for the board to be able to walk through as we continue those conversations in the district's moving forward.
It gave me sort of a more global perspective on it, although, you know, people have done a great job articulating, but since this is a different paradigm for me, it takes me a couple times to figure it out. So this was another good way for me to learn about the whole competency piece, so I appreciate you having that in the back of.
And then, well, actually, I can skip that part, because it comes up later on the agenda?
Okay. School Board Committee Reports. I, last week, last Thursday, attended the full board meeting for the Seacoast Learning Collaborative. One time a year, superintendents go throughout the year, but once a year, a member of the school board goes with the superintendent. I went last week. And the 2018-19 budget was approved for the Seacoast Learning Collaborative, and they're working again for the year to come to find a new permanent location for the school. For those of you that may not know, the Seacoast Learning Collaborative is an outsourcing option that Newark is a part of, along with other districts, to place students with particular special needs to go to a specific school. They were in Brentwood, and there were issues with the building in Brentwood, and they are now in Gonneck, and they're trying to find a location closer down to Seacoast, since that's where the majority of the students come from. And they're working diligently on that. It was a great meeting to see the dedication of staff, the direct co-directors of the Seacoast Learning Collaborative, the business manager, and the transportation director, and they're hardworking folks doing the best that they can for the population that they serve. So it's nice to be a part of that and to be with the other board members and superintendents.
So they're looking for a new?
They're trying, they're in negotiation for a new place now.
Do they have several suitors, or is there?
It's tough, because they have very specific requirements about the size of space they need and the functionality of the space. And so they have found a possibility in the old charter school building in Kensington, but there's a question of to determine.
Yeah, Kensington?
Mm-hmm.
I think that.
To determine.
Yes, it was the former Seacoast Charter School, but it was way back, belonged to the town, still belongs to the town.
So they're just trying to figure out a rental agreement and options and all those sorts of things. They had tried to find a place in Stratum, and that, that was what was going on this time last year, but that was not successful. And so they're just hoping that this one works and that they can move there permanently.
So where is it?
Where in Kensington? It's, if I went to describe it.
If I went to memories, this memory. So there are memories, and you keep going towards Kensington, come to that crossroad, the antique store here, go across, and it's almost downtown, it's to the right, it's an old elementary school. But you have to go past the old rickety house on the right. You take a right and go there.
It picks directions like I do.
Yeah. I can find it, I can drive you there.
I was on the fire department there, and I don't know what you're talking about. But it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, there's no fire, I'm not there anymore.
It had been closed for some time, and then was turned into the Seacoast Charter School, rented it from the town for a period of time, a number of years, and then they kind of outgrew that site and.
Like, three years ago, it came over.
Any other committee reports from any board members?
There's so many schools in Kensington, it's understandable, you could.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd get that one in there.
I sincerely.
Need one a night.
Well, the building committee is scheduled to meet next Tuesday, but I can just give a little project update. I'm told there's a lot of discussion about the parking lot across the street from the junior senior high school. It is not Mount Rushmore. It is, in fact, part of the planned design in order to accommodate the required filtration system for that space. So the elevation, I'm going to mess up the numbers, I want to say it's 54, 56 feet at the entry, and it's also 54 to 56 feet at the back. But because of the soil conditions, because the back part of that lot has some wetlands area, and it's very wet already, in order to address that, we have to build up to have the water filter out at ground level. And that's part of the required DES design.
Yep, there were three meetings on the wetlands, wasn't there?
Yeah, and there've been, I mean, it's been part of the permitting process through Department of Environmental Services. The filtration basin is different than the underground pond at the elementary school. It's not a sandy soil sort of catchment area. There's a little slope because there are catch basins to cover for the impervious surface that we've added through paving for parking there that runs sort of to the right, and they have to kind of slope back and forth to drive everything to that space in the back. And it is designed to, the chamber is essentially like six feet deep, maybe five and a half to six feet deep. And so in order to put that, to filter out at ground level, to filter all the sediment out of the soil and have that be appropriately treated by DES standards, you have to build up in order to accommodate that at ground level, so.
Is that anticipated?
That was anticipated. That's been part of the original design submission and DES approvals and all of those pieces.
And I will say, when I drove by coming here this evening, it seemed like it was lower. It might have been an optical illusion, but it felt, it looked like it was lower.
Did you put air in your tires?
But it did, I'm like, it seemed a little lower.
So, so to continue what Meredith said to, a little further on that, this isn't, we didn't build a mountain to flood out the pond, street, people.
Quite the opposite.
Or the, maybe the street or any, just the opposite. If we didn't do this, there would be more of a risk of runoff, if you will, or flooding. So it's purposeful, it wasn't, wasn't by accidents for sure.
And again, those meetings are online, those wetlands, when we sat through those lovely wetland meetings, that's what he talked about. He basically told us that's what we were going to have to do to protect that, to keep it from flooding.
And I think sometimes it's hard, even when we were talking before about the elementary school with the, the sand over there, it's a different situation. But when you look at the math of five to six inches an hour versus 56 inches an hour, we have to do something to mitigate those situations, and that's what we've done with the parking lot on the old copper property.
So Meredith, on that, I forget what we called it, it was like a question board, you sent me the answer.
Yes.
It was somebody from the public, it's, remember they had the question board, they could submit questions anonymously during the whole facilities process? Somebody submitted, it was a good question about, I forget how it was worded, but to the effect of, I think, was more fill required for that, that part of the project? And if so, what was the cost?
Yep. So, so there was some additional fill required as part of the Ekman contingency. There was a discrepancy between some of the drawings, the elevation, some of the drawings and the original, the original survey and the actual site conditions at the time of the project start, essentially. In that when the community conducted the original site survey, it was when they purchased the land, and then they had the town take down buildings and level the lot, and so that adjusted the soil in some areas. And so they had to bring in some additional fill to level that in order to meet the drainage requirements, again, as proposed to the state.
Do we have a rough estimate, Meredith, how much of the owner's contingent, not the owners, the Ekman's contingency?
I don't, but I can find that information for you, for sure.
Just for people who might be interested to hear that background, if we could remind them what the date was on the meeting, where that was explained, so if they wanted to go back and look at it, anybody have a?
It was several times.
Yeah, the drainage plan, you mean?
Right, right. If somebody wanted to go back and look at that, how would they find that?
It was many, I mean, I remember talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can even look at the early submissions, even going back to last year. I mean, that, that was the contemplated drainage system that we spec'd, going back to before the bond was approved, so.
And wetland had to be two years ago, right?
Yeah, it was.
That was happening before, yeah, I came in sort of at the tail end of that, that first summer.
And I think this speaks to the whole situation, you know, the elementary school and now this. These decisions are not being made in a vacuum. There have been countless hours of experts looking at these things on the state level with the constructive management company to determine what needs to happen to make these environmentally sound and all those different things.
That, that being said, I drove by there today and I went, whoa! And I'm the vice chair on the building committee. So I think lesson learned is, and it happens all the time, that our ability to respond to that, not defensively, but say, yep, that was exactly what we intended, and, because I saw a lot of, I'm not a Facebook guy, but I saw a lot of.
Chit-chat.
You know, was it, they built an airport or something over there? But how we can respond to that stuff without going through Facebook and all that crap? You know, is there a?
I, I would not respond in that way. What, what, because that's not appropriate for me representing the board or anything else. But what I would do is, you know, if someone came to me and said, Kim, what's the deal with this thing? I would say, get on Meredith's calendar so she can read the plans, and you give her, shoot her an email or something so you can see if you can get the answers you're looking for.
I mean, I think, I think it's working to some degree, I mean, you, some of this is inevitable, right? No matter what you do, you could put it on CNN and, you know, whatever, but, and have all sorts, I mean, you gotta, you gotta reach a reasonable balance. I do thank Mike Cahill for bringing some of that stuff to my attention, which I passed on to Meredith, which, you know, I'm sure she'd already known some of it. So it's, I mean, that's, I think what we've got to keep doing is, you know, hey, I saw this and.
Right, and not in a we screwed up sort of response, it's just, okay, that's the hot topic of today.
I gotta tell you.
And sometimes it might be that we screwed up, right? I mean, that's the reality, but everything we do happens publicly and there are no secrets here. All of our documents get approved, everything gets signed off, so people are welcome to come and look at plans or sit down with me or review any of them.
My only point is to say, well, we covered that two months ago, and that's not the point. The point is, there's a question out there about it. Is it an airport or is it not? And if it's not, how do we zoom back in a public way without sending every person to Meredith to answer each of the individual questions?
It's a delicate balance, because, you know, as I said, I cannot, I'm not going to respond in Facebook on those ways. You know, but if someone calls me and says, Kim, is this an airport? I can say, no, it's not.
That's why Air Force One was so high, around two weeks ago, looking for an airport.
No, it's not.
Well, some, some of, I'm sorry.
This is what, this is what the rationale is. I, my level of expertise is only going to go so far. So that's where I'd be more inclined to say, talk with someone who knows better than I do, so that we don't get misinformation from them.
So also add one of the other things, Jason and I, Jason and Greg and I, Jason, our IT director, Greg, facilities, and myself are meeting tomorrow morning to look at being able to regularly post photos and just project updates. Again, that's not, we probably wouldn't have anticipated that people were thinking we were building Mount Rushmore or an airport, right? But, but there would be enough information to say, hey, we're building the parking lot, installing the drainage system.
You can see the little smoke on the horizon.
Well, the new one is, we're building over there.
And I guess, I guess I would just, since that, we still have that functionality, and I think the link is on the Facility Committee website, which is, you know, people can use that as a, as a way to, to just raise questions, we're happy to answer them.
Who does that go to?
It, it, it comes to, the prompts keen to, it's still come to me.
Yeah.
It's like a Google program and.
But if we could set up a separate site, which could be updated.
And that's the intent, is to sort of repurpose.
No, I think that's perfect.
Existing site and drive.
And if we, we get people in the mindset of going to that, knowing that it's going to be updated on a consistent basis, so, oh, I have a question about what's going on there, let me go to this site to see if my question can be answered, or submit one.
This is maybe something we can talk about as, as part of our upcoming retreat or any other retreat, is also, it may make sense, you know, when, when the dirt, if you will, really starts flying after school's out, to, maybe in the fall, have a check-in forum where people can come, we can kind of give them enough, you know, enough date thing and where we're at, and they can ask, because I'm sure, this is, this is just starting, we're going to keep, we're going to keep, wait till those fences go up, they're going to think we're tearing the place down, you know, so you never know, but just.
So just to briefly finish on the project update, so we anticipate opening that parking lot next week. It's getting straight, I think, maybe Monday, but making that available so it will be usable during graduation. The following week, because our seniors will be gone and because we have a lot of work this summer, we're going to be essentially fencing the back portion of the parking lot in order to start some of the work, sort of prepping for the drainage installation that has to happen in the back of the property. So it just gives us a little bit of a heads up during those, head start during those last two weeks of school. So we'll, again, that information will come from the junior senior high, to parents and families, just to make them aware of those changes. But the timing was such that with seniors no longer parking there and the parking lot across the street being available, we felt we could accommodate that and just, again, give us that little bit more time before we end the school.
Will we lose all that parking in the back?
Nope.
No?
Nope, graduation's open and we were able to get the parking lot across the street available to us, so we should be fine. And again, Lambre Health has offered use of its parking lot for graduation and we have the elementary school site available as well. So, we think we should be all set, but.
So the parking lot, definitely will just be done, done, right? All the landscaping and lighting and all that?
Uh, landscaping will go in this week and lighting will go in. The, it is not the final coat because it's where our construction equipment is going to be staged this summer, but.
Yeah, they usually let it settle anyways.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing I noticed, by the way, when I went by over there today is the way they've got that material stacked up there is very dangerous. Kids are going to look at that as a great place to walk and play.
Where is this? Down at McGrath?
Next to the elementary school.
It is peak like, I mean, it is way, way older.
I looked at, I didn't have my distance glasses on and I thought, did they take that fence out? It took me a few more steps to get there because my vision as a former teacher of four-year-olds was the sandbox.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, it's fenced, but for a flash moment there, I didn't see the fence because I didn't have my distance glasses on.
This one, by the way, is not fenced with this stacking material.
At the Carpenter property you were talking about?
No, behind the.
McGrath.
Was it open temporarily?
Oh, yeah, it's temporary.
While they were working, but, yeah.
It's not safe.
Look at that tomorrow, I was over there a couple times today, so I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about, but we can chat.
If you, in front of the elementary school, you're going to see huge piles of long sand and right out there, that's where.
That's fenced.
It is not fenced.
The, the school fence is there?
It's the school fence between the school and the material, but there's no fence for kids to go in from the street. Kids.
It might have been open today, but there was, is a street fence that marks the construction and turns that.
Yeah, the fence goes across it.
Go take a look. I could, I very much could be wrong.
Because I walked by there, I walked by it.
Okay.
But I appreciate you calling.
You're keeping your eyes on it.
Questions today, down and back up.
Meredith, did you finish your report?
I did.
Any other committee reports?
Okay.
Just that the Seco School Technology is having their award ceremony on Thursday night, 5:30.
Okay.
And their next industry tour is the fifth installment, in case anybody's interested in going along. Be there at nine o'clock.
Meredith, do we have a healthcare study committee this Thursday?
We do.
Okay.
Three fifteen.
That's what I wanted to make sure. All right, moving along, Meredith, you touched on it a little bit before, but there've been meetings about, and we've had meetings here about the heterogeneous grouping at the, the high school for the rising ninth graders. Is there any update with where that, that stands or any information you could share with us at this point?
Sure, I think this was an agenda item at the request of a member of the public who is not here.
Yep.
But, let's see, there were three parent meetings. I was not at the first one, I was at the second one and at the third one, which was beginning of last week. Principal Mazzoni at that meeting shared a plan to move from essentially that we have three tracks, for lack of a better term, at the high school level. And there will be two in the next school year. So, that's what I can share.
And one will be honors, one will be just the.
College prep.
College prep, yeah.
Can you, Meredith, explain just a little bit how that sort of morphed to become now? Was it just sort of a, as a result of the meetings, more back and forth amongst administration? And was it a compromise or sort of?
Yeah, I mean, Principal Mazzoni's not here to speak to that, so I don't want to speak on his behalf. I think it was a, probably a combination of all of that. I think it was sort of hearing folks and listening and engaging in dialogue.
I didn't go to the first meeting, I went to the second meeting. There was a lot of questions. And it just, it didn't go as well as it could have. There were, there were topics to discuss and we had two teachers there that were going to show us how they have been implementing it slowly within the school this year. But I think that the administration responded. The third meeting was better. It went smoothly, I didn't see a lot of questions. They seemed to calm nerves down by having the two different levels. That's what it did for me, knowing that if you had somebody who moved at a faster pace or was just more advanced in certain things, that they would have a spot to be in. And we've been doing that along, all along anyways, but it just, it was explained a little bit differently by Mr. Mazzoni. So, I, I felt better when I left that meeting.
Can you, I'm having a hard time understanding.
So, what we're going to do is heterogeneous, right? So, ninth grade coming in, we were going to have four English class, I'm guessing, right? Four English classes, four math classes, four history classes and four science.
Yep, yep, yep.
No, we do leveling, four, five and six, no levels. Johnny goes with Betty and they, it's just, it doesn't matter. Johnny can't read and Betty can read at a sixth grade level, whatever, you know? They were all going to be in the same pod, for lack of a better word, class. This way, the parents' concerns were that not, you couldn't meet the needs of somebody who's working at a higher, higher level than somebody who's working at a lower level who will need more help. How's that teacher going to be able to pay attention to this student? What's going to happen if I want to put my kids, my kids are going to move faster? Are they going to be able to get out of that class and do something different? The, the questions were so hard and fast that I, I don't think Mr. Mazzoni was able to answer them the right way on that second meeting. The third meeting, he was able to answer them. And to me, it just made better sense to have that honors class. Teachers will recommend them, they'll have to have a certain grade level. And that's how, it seemed to work better.
Is that how it is now?
No.
By levels, yeah. Like, I think it's four, five and six. And, and level four being the lowest, level six being, is it honors or?
Basically honors.
Yes, yeah. So, it's graduated, so you'd have, it's not mathematically perfect, but you have a level five course, you know, with level five students and then a level six course, level six students. You don't have, it's more complicated that you don't have all the levels for each class because you simply don't have the size of students for them. And you might not have a level six or, you don't have level sixes right now for a lot of courses because it just aren't the numbers of students. But the paradigm shift is, is grouping all students. I think some of the high level concern, which is very reasonable, when you're thinking of it, you know, on its face, is that, you know, how is my highly motivated or highly achieving student, some people think this, how are they going to get the time and attention they need or are they going to be, you know, this is, and I'm not, I think there's merit to it, okay? But I'm just talking about maybe some of the difficulty in the early meetings and, not difficulty, but some of the concern or anxiety is, are they going to get that attention now? Are they going to be just sort of left to fend for themselves and, and vice versa? You know, at the, at the lower levels, you know, of students? So, I think, I think that was a fundamental concern. I would just add that anytime we, as a district, and we should use this as a learning opportunity, are using the terms like paradigm shift or, especially, you know, when, at the end of the year, when folks are picking grades and anxiety is high, I think we ought to, as we're rolling these things out, and again, I think there's merit to this program, that's not my issue with it, is, and I think a lot of our administrators obviously do as well, who know better than I do, is, is that we've had, we've had good examples of bringing the public along with these things, you know, whether it's the facilities, it was the kindergarten group, the most recent example perhaps is the, is the late start group. Think it behooves us to make sure that, that we do that, you know? Whether it's a committee of community members and administrators or us, we can, you know, consider that on a case-by-case basis, but what we need to do is bring people along. I think a, a way to do it better than we did at this time was, was rolling it out as we did and then having the forums, because then that, you know.
And then maybe more people would attend the forums because, again, all that misinformation gets out there and people come back and come talk and ask their questions.
I think, I think it's settled out a little bit, although I don't know. I mean, you know, you have a lot of folks who are really tuned into this stuff.
But nobody, then nobody's here.
And some, some may not be, but I think, I think, I think folks are, at least ones who are paying attention are more at ease now that they've heard more about it. And it doesn't mean you'll get everybody to agree with everything, and that's not my point. You never will. There's always going to be just good, solid disagreement, that's fine, but I would just, I would say all of us, just make sure that if there's an opportunity to sort of cooperate folks and, and get the word out earlier, that we're even looking at it, that we're even, okay, you know, day one, you know, we, boy, we've seen this program in other districts and we're starting to look at it ourselves, this is how we're going to look at it, this is how we're going to analyze it, this is the group that's doing it. We'll tell you, we'll keep up the speed as we're going along. I think that would be very helpful.
One of the things that I heard attending the second meeting, that I think tells us something about our communication about our whole program was, I heard a lot of questions about how the grading system would impact students' application for college. And if, and we have a new counselor, so a different, people don't know our counselor, our counselor perhaps as well as they did us, the gentleman who was here for years, to help people understand that college or further education application process and how our grades impact that. Or what, what does that transcript tell a university, not just the grades or a college or, or a technical school? What's the information that those places take from what we provide them? Because I think a lot of the parents sounded like it was going to be the number grade and there's a lot more information that our schools provide and a lot more information that institutes of further education look for than those numbers. But if our parents don't understand the application process, that is the thing that they understand and they, they jump on because they don't understand the rest of it. And there's further, there's further education that we can do besides just the heterogeneous grouping. And there was a lot of, I heard a lot of concern about that.
Yeah, that second meeting, like a lot of words, the title page or what was that?
The profile?
Profile page. And people were like, what's that? You know, and nobody understood it. The third meeting, Mr. York presented that and explained what it was so that there was, so that calmed down people and how, how schools ask and what, it's a page that explains our school. So when your child applies, this is what gets sent and it was, it was, it was, it was a very good meeting.
I forget his name, Meredith, the guy, new guidance.
Just New York.
Just New York, I should know that. He actually presented at this last meeting on that, Ingrid, that was last week, I believe. And he's, it looks like he's making good progress on that in terms of not only updating our current data, but making it, what's the word? He's making it.
He's modernizing.
He's modernizing it. It's more, it's more user friendly, I guess, from, from the recipient, so, and, so, but that's helpful to know. I mean, it's something I really didn't know. I don't think parents really understood that.
What's funny is the least education experienced guy here, I've been so enamored with the enthusiasm, the ability to look at the individual child and find out where they are relative to everybody else and scooping down to that child and making sure that he, his penmanship included script writing or whatever, and that we don't lose those pieces along the way. I never thought of this stuff. It just never, it, it never crossed my mind that it would be a grading issue. But such a great benefit to the kid's education. Forget what the, you know, it's kind of me, forget the, forget the grade for you, for me, you're going to end up with a much better educated kid. So that's where I got lost and maybe some other parents did too.
Yeah.
It sounds like the third meeting did, you know, swage some of the fears and, and help explain things better, so that's good.
Yeah, because nobody's here.
There were some people that were planning on coming, one could not make it, so, but people, and that was before the third meeting, but that's why I did it up on the agenda.
So again, a good workshop topic and again, sort of falls off of that piece around competency base that we've, we've had some discussions about already, but it continues that, that thread. And, you know, it, it is, in terms of how we approach grouping, it is different from, I think, what traditionally some high schools have done, but it is what we do in K-8. And so it is, it is how teachers are prepared, but it does require some public education around rethinking about what we know about the college experience and the high school experience because it is, it is changing and evolving as you saw from our students tonight.
My next door neighbor who's not an educator either, we were out to dinner the other night talking about it and, you know, his, his reaction, I hope he's not watching, but his, his reaction was, here we go again, not holding the kids accountable and not giving them, you know, and it just, it's.
Different kind of accountability.
Yeah, it's just a different way to look at it. Instead of shoving.
Kind of shaking out of it.
You know, special ed used to be that little room in the cellar, remember? And, you know, we hid the kids and now it's all integrated and it is, so, and that's the one thing I did like, the heterogeneous grouping, was that you would have these kids that maybe struggled a little bit and sometimes learning by, from your peers.
Who are you?
You know, and I did like that part.
Their benefits.
Yeah, so anyways, enough.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is, no, Chris, are you presenting something?
Just listening.
All right, because I wanted to, we're going, going into a longer topic, so I wanted to make sure that we were not. As we know, our retreat is scheduled for this Friday. I received from, some feedback from some of the board members about some of the topics that they wanted to go over. Al's highlights were managing the SAU, long-term strategic plans, that types of things, a schedule for required action in terms of budget, performance reviews, objective setting and that type of thing. And Mike sort of took a little bit along with that. His first topic was coming up with a calendar for the year of things like the budget, evaluating Meredith, providing her with her goals and objectives, things of that nature. Mike also took it to identifying critical issues, communication strategic planning, policy refinement, goals, responsibilities, and then choosing our next retreat strategy, session date and what topics to address at the meeting. We could talk about that further. Some of the things, Ingrid sent me a couple things about effective conflict resolution, maybe with a third party coming in to help us with that, leading that discussion.
Decision making.
Decision making was my next thing I was going to say. And then some of the things that I thought of are, you know, trust in terms of team building and communication within us as a team, as well as Meredith and the team that we have collectively there. Communication, again, in a different aspect, not just what is going to be communicated, but the style of communication, those types of things are things that I think are important. I could always use a review of right-to-know stuff, which will not begin this, and then concrete goals for us as a board in a real way, in terms of measurable things that can happen, and then leading into Meredith's goals for her, for the upcoming year and her performance review.
And I didn't send you an email, but you and I had a conversation and I said communication was top of mind.
I did know. Elizabeth, thank you for telling me that. And I will add that, I think with the, is there anything that either from what you've told me or what you've sent that I have omitted or misrepresented or is missing?
I don't, can I just, I would just add, we, you know, this is three hours or if, if that's how long, I don't think we really set a time on a Friday night. My instinct is that we'll get some good conversation going and we should, at the very least, come out with what our next meeting is going to be, whether it's a month later or two months or whenever it is, because I think we, we can't, those are all good issues from everybody. I don't think we can cover even ten percent of them on a Friday night for three hours. So that's, that's just my, we've got to keep our eye on that ball, making sure we come out and, and in some sort of orderly fashion that this is how we're going to follow up and these are priority of these issues, we think.
Yep.
So, if we can get to some good substance, that's great, but that, that will be icing on the cake.
And my comment is that it's like ninety-eight percent of every business team has ever been there, people get an opportunity to talk and express themselves and then they walk out with nothing, other than the feeling that they had spoken their piece. I'd like to walk out of. People get an opportunity to talk and express themselves and then they walk out with nothing, other than the feeling that they had spoken their piece. I'd like to walk out of there with something, and that may be Mike's schedule. Or it may be a definition of board responsibilities and superintendent responsibilities. Not that it's, has to be final, but I'd like to walk out of there with something.
I mean, I think what we would have to do, and this is just my thought, is sort of, as a basis of that schedule, sort of prioritize what things have to happen in a more timely basis associated with those things and sort of maybe marry those two things up in terms of concrete.
So I'll, if it pleases everyone, I'll, I'll agree to do this. I'll put together a draft calendar with issues, and I'm going to miss a bunch, I'm sure of it, but at least they'll give us something to, to work with. And we can play, you know, the dates. I think it'll help us visualize what we got to get done during the year and, and probably lead to discussion about what's important. I'll do that.
I mean, and you could always put it in a Google Doc and maybe if we add to it or whatever.
It's pushing it, Kim.
I'm only saying.
I'm thinking like an email with bullets, maybe, but, but I'll put it in some sort of convertible form.
Okay, no, that's great.
I, I think it helps to work with something.
Sounds great.
And, and I invite torture to my draft.
We're a friendly group. All right, any other thoughts on that? So Thursday, Friday at four. The next thing is the draft, draft job descriptions for the teacher leader, assistant principal and student services and lead teacher.
Where's the assistant principal?
He's in the packet.
Yes.
Towards the beginning.
Got it.
This is teacher leader. Assistant was the second one.
Got it.
So these are drafts. These have been shared with faculty, administrative team head, opportunity to give feedback and input on these drafts. So they're here for your review and feedback and questions.
How was the process received by the faculty and staff?
They were very enthusiastic about the idea of having the teacher leader positions. I think we heard pretty clearly from folks who attended meetings and some email input that they feel like there is a need for some additional support, particularly around the area of special education at the building level in both schools. So they appreciated the thought to add an assistant principal, so that there'd be an additional one at each building to really focus on the special education or to bring that expertise, I should say.
So I had asked for Erica, Erica's job description, that's why you all have it, because I was trying to see how, where she would fit in. So if I have these assistant principals for special education, how, where do you see her job? What would her role?
So there's really little difference now. We have one person essentially functioning in this role now, Christina Cochran, and so we would be adding a second. It would mean that Christina and her newly hired counterpart, if this is approved, would take responsibility for sort of the day-to-day building level oversight. Erica would continue to monitor the overall budget, meet, meet with them, take care of program, review and evaluation, manage the out-of-district cases, do the court appearances, write the court reports, handle dispute resolution pieces, those typical things that a director does, along with oversight for five oh four. With Chris's departure, she'd also be picking up, while we're proposing a lead mentor, she would oversee that lead mentor and essentially the budget and pieces for the mentoring program. She will take on the role of homeless liaison, which, which Chris has handled. And she'll have a slightly higher level of oversight for assessment, particularly for students with disabilities, ESOL, and just generally because.
So with the, so I'm walking me through, because my idea, when this whole, we've been talking about this for about two or three years, putting our director in a building and then just hiring another person, so we had two people. You're telling me I need two people, I'm not saying that correctly, just. So we're putting two people there. Erica will stay here, whoever will be that, that have that job description. She is now going to absorb some of that assistant superintendent jobs that.
Yep.
Because now Erica doesn't always go to, and I forget the name of the parent meeting.
RUP.
And there are others too, there's something else.
Valuation.
Something like that. And so.
There's a series.
Will she be attending those or these are going to be the assistant principals?
So the assistant, so the hope is long-term that our administrators at the building level will take on more of that responsibility because one of the challenges we face right now in special education is that it is often isolated from regular ed. And so there's been a conscious decision on the part of the administrative team to better integrate those roles so that our building administrators, our existing principal and assistant principal in both schools will take a more active role in also sometimes facilitating special education meetings and being part of that team. They oversee the general education teachers who are providing services to all of these students with disabilities. And they would also share some oversight responsibilities, again, moving forward, supervision responsibilities for special educators. Because providing good instruction, being a good member of the team, doing good planning applies to general ed and special education teachers. And all administrators are trained to be able to evaluate all of those folks.
So it's going to take some of that responsibility. Christina can't make it, if Erica can't make it, sometimes we, we have administrators go. So that will remove that burden from them. Correct. So then we're saying that principals and, these are still going to be vice principals, but they're not going to have the same role as our vice principal. They're not going to be disciplinary.
I, I think they will over time, and I think that, that happens now by default. And, and when it doesn't, because we don't have another person, it's challenging. You know, it, it sort of strips the resources for that period of time. I think our building administrators, if you were to poll them, the four of them would tell you right now, five if you include Christina, that, that they find it difficult to keep up with the daily demands, in part because of the behavioral issues that are regularly referred to them.
So this, so this person will then take over.
It will provide support for that as well.
Meredith, can you help me with some knowledge? Is Christina, is she at the high school?
She splits her time across the two buildings.
So the idea would be that she would be at one building in, in the, this.
The highly hired person, should that be approved, would be at the other.
Other building, okay. I, I wrote down a few things here, but the, the title would be assistant principal for student services and then down on the job goal, it calls it assistant principal for special education, same thing?
It, it should be the top one, but we'll make that correction.
I, I didn't know if it was, okay, so, and so we'll, on the qualifications, it talks about principal in the perenns and/or special education administration. Doesn't it have to be and? I mean, you helped me with this understanding of, don't you need some special education focus in your, in your education and/or your grad school or whatever to, to do this job? I mean, we can't, it can't be and/or, it's got to be and, right? I mean.
You will be, so which bullet are you looking at?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the qualifications, the third, the third folded definition from the top.
No, the certification could be either principal or special ed administrator.
That's what I don't know.
Principals have to have special education law training.
Okay.
And they've also had the same training as all of our educators around instruction in that front in meeting the needs of students with disabilities. They, they also have required training in supervision and evaluation. They're just two different pathways towards certification. We, we want the best person and special education administrators are hard to find. We want to keep our options open and, and we have good expertise, again, in our existing administrators in both buildings, so.
So another follow-up question. So we have assistant principals at both the junior, senior and the elementary school now. What happens there when we hire this new position?
How so? They remain?
Will they remain? This will be in addition to that?
Correct.
Okay, so like, there may be two vice principals, if you will?
At each school.
Okay.
Yep, so they can split supervision and evaluation three ways instead of two and a half ways essentially at each building. They can split discipline support three ways instead of two and a half ways. Again, I think what we heard from teachers and administrators was that there is a need at the building level for some additional administrative support. And we think this will provide that.
All right, so do we know what we're talking about in terms of potential range? Obviously, it depends on Chris's experience coming in. Do we know and we've worked that out sort of high level on a budget?
So next year's budget for the assistant superintendent position, salary and benefits is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Our existing department head and special ed team leader stipends total twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'm just walking through this for the public, but a total of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars budgeted essentially for those roles. What we're proposing next year would be an additional assistant principal position, ballpark seventy-five thousand dollars in salary plus another thirty thousand in benefits. And then proposed teacher leader mentor and, teacher leader and a lead mentor stipend estimated at about thirty-six thousand dollars. And those would be based on the teacher's step and lane under the collective bargaining agreement because we're proposing to pay an additional ten days at their per diem rate.
Okay, so we're not, in, in not so many words, with Chris leaving and with the readjustment of the, these positions, the department heads now to teacher leads, if you will. We're only talking a difference of about three thousand, roughly.
Correct. And, and we have some personnel hirings to talk about later, but our impression is that we'll be able to cover that out of the personnel changes that we expect.
And we, we'll get to the SRO later. I guess that's on the agenda. But how, Meredith, it looks like the, the description here is pretty lengthy. Was it borrowed? Was it?
So it's a rework of our, our existing assistant principal position and pulling in our building coordinator position description. So we blended those.
This is just a question of interest. How, it says the reports to the building principal and the director of student services. Does that work on a day-to-day level?
It happens now. You know, I, I think there is one, one, one of those people will be assigned to be the evaluator with the other person providing input to that process. But that, that happens on a day-to-day basis now. If something happens at the building level that the principal needs, then the principal's in charge. If there's a special education direction that needs to be provided, then that's coming from Erica, you know, in terms of program and, and legal decisions. So, you know, from an evaluator perspective, we will assign one, but from a day-to-day basis, that is how it functions now.
Okay. And this will be my last one. On number forty-three, under management and operations, it says participate in selection of staff for the school. What does that mean on, on an actual basis? I mean, participation, participation in relevant special ed staff like paras?
Be all, but interviewing, reference checks, whatever sort of is assigned by the principal for the appropriate hiring committee. Could be teachers, could be support staff, paraprofessionals, tutors.
If the need for administrations there, in other words, they're not limited to this, the special education role?
Correct.
They could fill in, okay.
Yeah.
I'll follow up to Mike's. Out of my HR administrator's background, the, I picked up on the same thing, the dual reporting relationship. I've never seen it work. Somebody has to know who's, who's the decision maker about whether I'm staying or going or doing a good job or not. But I think you've covered that by saying that you'll assign somebody, so I've got to keep Joe and Sam happy, but Joe, I've got to keep really happy because he's, it's just human nature. And then the last comment I had, and I have not spent a lot of time on this, was that I'm, I'm assuming that the selection of a team leader will be a management right and not part of the bargaining.
It is, it is not built into the collective bargaining agreement, but compensation is a bargaining piece, and so we are.
I, I, from a compensation standpoint, I understand it, but I'd hate to get in a position where.
It's our.
The union is having some feeling about Mary's been here longest, therefore she should be the, I don't, I, I wouldn't support the whole concept if that were the case.
I don't anticipate that, and that is not how.
And I think we should be specific about that.
Conceptualize that.
Yeah. I'm sorry if I, if I'm just asking what Al does to ask, but it raised, so our existing department head, special ed team structure, those are chosen how?
Administrators.
Administrators, okay. And the proposed teacher lead mentors would be chosen how?
Same way.
Same way.
Yep.
And, and it's possible, perhaps, that maybe some of those existing department heads will apply for this, I guess, right? Is that what it's going to, is it going to be an application or?
There's an application. We have, we have posted as anticipated, again, not knowing the outcome of this. But we will go through an interviewing process. There'll be a review of applications. It, and there may be teachers involved in the interview and selection process, but the decision rests with administration.
And, and seniority might, might have something to do with it, but certainly not the driving.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly could. I mean, again, we're looking for the most qualified candidate who's going to be able to lead their peers effectively and conduct this work and who's bringing that knowledge and expertise to the table.
It's a question worth clarifying because I know of school systems where it's either automatically the most senior person in that, that grade level or that department or the teachers in that department or that grade level elect somebody. So it's worth asking and questioning and getting clarified that that is a management.
Yes, and that, and that has been the practice here historically.
I'm sorry, while we're on, I, I'm moving into the teacher leaders if I can, if it, how many, how many of those are we, are we anticipating?
So we're anticipating roughly ten. We have a little bit of flexibility. I think one of the pieces that is not fully clarified is how we're going to work with our unified arts areas as well as world language. So that's, that's sort of still in discussion. It's possible that a couple of folks might split a position, for example, so we could wind up with ten full positions, but it could be divided across, you know, fifteen people. We, we want to have the flexibility to expand kind of upwards to twelve if we need to. We've got a lot of content areas and a lot of teachers that these folks are representing, and we don't want to leave anyone out.
But in that, and the concept, I think, we discussed at the last meeting makes a lot of sense to me in terms of not isolating this by buildings. This is a group that, that meets together. Who, who, who do you envision, Meredith, sort of coordinates all that, making sure that everybody's doing what they need to be doing?
So they'll be meeting with me on a monthly and maybe ultimately quarterly basis, probably after we kind of get up and running and have laid out the plans. They'll be training the last week of June, again, if, if this moves forward for all of those folks in looking at data, how to work effectively with a team, facilitation skills and some longer-term planning in their, in their content areas, as well as some work around what does it mean, what's a curriculum cycle? What does that look like? How do you plan for that? And we've, I've reached out tentatively to some, to some folks to help us with that training. And then they'll also meet at the building level, in their respective buildings, on a monthly basis with building administrators, just to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Are teachers encouraged or looking forward to this? I mean, has this been vetted amongst them? Do they know this is afoot and that this is something we're looking at?
Yep, I've had meetings with faculty in both buildings, offered times for people to come in. People have given me some email input. Again, I, I would say it was well-received by faculty in both buildings. And I feel did a couple of questions today and we've received some letters of interest already, so that's encouraging.
So I do, so it reports to superintendent of schools or designated. What's the role of a principal in all this? What's their role?
So they'll be meeting with the principals on a monthly basis at each building level.
I thought you said you.
And me, yep, yep, separately. They're two different meetings. So the meeting with me is to worry about K-12 and the meeting at the building level is to focus on the building level. I anticipate that each of our administrators will be assigned to a core content area, not to be the lead person for that area, but just to be a liaison to those core areas.
So, Meredith, just, and again, I'm, I may, this is maybe rhetorical, but I, I think it helps the public to understand too, but the, the job description talks about facilitating, facilitating or recommending perhaps curriculum changes or improvements or, who makes the final decision on all of that? Is this sort of a?
The board.
I know, but I mean, somebody who knows about this.
So if you think about the super kids process that we went through, right, with reading. So we did some research, we got some recommendations from the consultant that we'd been working with, we brought some materials in, we gave teachers an opportunity to try those out, test them, look at them, give some input and feedback. And then a recommendation came forward that moved forward into the budget process. Now we're working on the training piece. We've done some piloting. We have training occurring. We have training occurring on June 11th for all of our K-2 teachers. And, and then that group will continue to kind of review that. How's it working? Do we have the tools that we need? You know, how are we doing with the training? Are there some places where we need to tweak it? Ultimately, what's the progress that we see our students making?
So, it bubbles up from, from really the grassroots, the folks that are there, and then ultimately up to us and, you know, through, through administration, okay?
My only concern is that it just seems so administrative-heavy, where, where... I can see the benefit, obviously, I told you last time we had this. My concern is the budget and just the heaviness of the administration, and where's the money going to come from? Will it come from, will we have to do a budget cut again next year? If that's where, that's my concern, just to pay for all this, right?
So, the good thing is, if we look, you know, year over year, if we add assistant...
I know, I know what you're saying.
Superintendent Andruski's salary. If I'm doing my math right, the difference in the budget requirements would be $3,250.
For that position, correct.
For, because if we take, for the total thing, for the total thing. So, if we, if we look at what we have with the existing salary for the assistant superintendent, plus department head and special ed, that gives us to $137,750. If we look at a different thing, which is the assistant principal salary proposal, plus benefits, gets us to 105, plus $36,000, which is the proposed stipends for this. The total is $141,000. So, it's about a $3,250, $3,250 change, if my math is halfway right.
And so, again, there's no change in the number of administrators in this proposal year over year? But, you know, all of those things are on the table with every budget cycle, and we have a teacher contract before us. It will, all of those things will be discussed.
You also mentioned too that, you know, once some of the work is done, if you will, I'm way oversimplifying this, maybe in three years, there's a different recommendation in terms of administrative structure, right?
I did.
It's not written in stone here. I mean, it's just...
One, one thing that I like about it, you know, overall, is looking, one, at the K through 12 aspect, or pre-K through 12 aspect, having people in different buildings communicating about content areas that are the same, and the benefits that all the students can receive from that. But also, the integration in a more regulated way of the special ed and the regular education situation, because all teachers of all kinds interact with the children on an IEP or whatever it is in the special ed program every day. And I think that it's important for us to really look at how everyone in the school has a, has a, not a vested interest, because we all do, but works together to help that all children do and be the best they can, whether they're in a special ed situation or a regular ed situation.
So, I guess I asked the question, are teachers excited about this? I didn't ask the other question, are there any that have opposing views? And might, and not that, I mean, is there, are there arguments to both sides of this? Or, I mean, have you really heard much?
Not that have been brought to me. I had a number of comments, yes, we need more support at the building level, this is a great opportunity for teachers, this is going back to some structure we had some time ago. You know, yeah, that's what I've heard from, from folks. Yeah.
And I think also having, you know, rebuilding the mentoring program in a, in a different structured way, and also having a monetary compensation piece associated with it. Not that people are driven by compensation, but I think when I know that I'm required to do ten additional days, maybe I'm more intentional about those ten additional days. Not that people are unintentional now, but it gives a different perspective, I think, when there's dollars associated with it, and greater than what we're currently doing, I think, with the department heads.
I mean, again, this, this is going to be subject to review and, and feedback and evaluation. You know, we're going through a big change. We went through a big change, we're going through another big change with Chris's departure, and we're going to be figuring out how, how all of these pieces fit together. And, and that's not to say that I don't have confidence that this can work, I think it can. But I, I think there may be things that bubble up that didn't occur to any of us through this process, and we'll be obligated to respond to those and address those, and we may come back with some modifications to this proposal moving forward. So, I'm not asking for a vote, but I would love to just get a sense of, you know, is the board comfortable with us continuing to move forward with this? Because in the interest of time, and we only have one more meeting, I'd love to be able to bring nominations, at least for, you know, the in-house positions on June 14.
And you have ads running, so you're going to start getting...
Yes, things are beginning to come in. And again, just want a sense of, does it make sense for us to continue moving forward this way? And then we would come to you in June 14th for final approval of job descriptions.
I think what I'd like to see is who responds to those ads, and to make sure we're in the right ballpark for money for these positions. So, I mean, I would like for you to keep looking into it, if that's my feeling, and to see who responds to the ads, and, okay?
I'd go a little stronger than that. I, you know, again, I've got to admit I'm the least qualified to, to, to evaluate teacher positions and so forth of anybody in this room. But I've got confidence, we've gone through the process, and as you say, you can always, you can always modify it based on applicants and so forth. But from my standpoint, I'd like to, to give you the support to go ahead and, and make this happen.
In terms of, Meredith, I'd see the merit in it, and I just, I guess it's maybe the next item on the agenda in terms of the school resource officer funding. I just want to make sure I understand how that is being proposed relative to everything. And, you know, we also have that issue with the, the money that was voted at the town, at the, at the, at the meeting, back into the budget. And I just, I'd like to understand how we intend to do all of that in this, because we, you know, we aren't adding year over year, but we're filling in a position that's leaving, if you will, with other positions that we're, a position, I guess, we're creating in, in other stipends. But, so I guess I'd like to understand that in context as well? On the school resource officer funding? Where's the money going to come from, in other words?
It's the big picture on the funding rather than...
Yeah, not the...
Dealing with individual things and then going, whoops!
So, am I answering that now, or shall I wait till we get to that agenda item?
Um, I guess the, maybe we should, I guess, I guess the consensus, if I'm reading it, is that you guys all, we want to have the whole...
To me, it kind of relates, I mean, it's, it's hard.
Meredith, if you could proceed with that?
So, moving on to school resource officer funding, the conversation that I believe we had last had was consideration of the use of the $80,000 that was added to the budget at deliberative session for that purpose.
We did, just sort of review for the public that may not have been aware, on, at May fifteenth, on May 15th, we had a public forum at the elementary school to discuss the prospect of adding a school resource officer or an SRO at the elementary school. We had very good attendance and participation in that meeting, I thought. And after that meeting, we held a special business meeting, at which time we voted as a board to approve adding a second school resource officer at the elementary school, hopefully by the beginning of the fall term. And Meredith, if you can just reiterate what you just said, I know you said it, but I've... We decided the funding source for that was going to be what?
Well, the, the recommendation we brought forward to you was to use the $80,000 that was added at deliberative session. And so, $35,000 of that was to fund a part-time social studies position at the junior senior high. The concern I heard expressed at the last meeting was what's going to happen to AP? And I think, as Principal Mazzone had discussed at prior meetings, we've identified the teacher and scheduled the teacher to be trained for AP. That's part of existing staffing. So, if that funding were to be restored, I guess we could hire a part-time social studies teacher, if that was the will of the board. Course offerings have already gone out, and courses are, class assignments are already being made.
I think we, and we all, we said it, when that money was put back in, we said this is to... Meredith makes that final decision. I think what we've heard through the public and through a couple of people, would people, if we use that money, if we say, use that $80,000 that was put back in for two specific reasons, two specific jobs, have we done our due diligence? I, I know for me, it was a knee-jerk emotional reaction. I'm like, I don't care where you get the money, put that officer in that, in that building. I've since been reprimanded through text and email. I, if we can find a different way to fund it...
Can I, can I, let me, let me see if I can cut to what I was really trying to say here, is that I, I don't know if the vote, and I, my others' memories are perhaps better than mine, was to use that source for funding.
We did not vote on the source of funding specifically, but that was what had been discussed.
Sure, without a doubt. What I, I would like folks to understand, who may be listening as well, is that the decision... First of all, thank you, first of all, for coming out and supporting the schools as you did. It was very well-meaning. And, but I think what I'm hearing, Meredith, what you're saying to us and the folks, is that these positions that were considered are being adequately covered. I mean, the needs are being adequately covered, okay? And so, we have this $80,000 in there. Now, now we have a choice. A choice is to, you know, not use it at all, or use it for something I think we've all unanimously agreed makes sense. And I think a lot of folks who were there at that meeting that night, the public meeting, thought made sense as well. This is an unusual circumstance, because on the one hand, I think, you know, some well-meaning, a well-meaning folk, person got up and made that motion at the meeting, and another supported it. I'm not sure what they understood at the time is, is, is our reasoning as to those positions. They're covered, right?
One of the questions I had...
Those issues are covered, and so the money's there. Some might argue we should put it back in. We see a need based on, you know, changes in circumstances, and advice of, of the police chief and others who were there, Meredith and others at the meeting that night. So, this isn't a, I'll stop talking. This isn't, this isn't a situation where we are finding a position for the money, in other words. This is something that we truly believe in, and we think it's in the best interest of the school, and we understand what the money was originally proposed to be for. But we, I think, I'm comfortable that those needs have been taken care of, those, those positions. So, it's not, in other words, I don't think we're picking one over the other.
Yeah, I agree, and perhaps if we had been a little more direct during that meeting, and I thought we were, I thought we said to the people who recommended, understand, you can't, you can't direct the SAU or the superintendent or the board to, to hire anything.
I believe that I said that those funds would be put to the bottom line, and we would decide what needs to happen with them operationally at the time.
But somehow, that concept lingered that those funds are going in. And I think it's a poor precedent to set or to allow that to continue. I mean, that, that way, people at, at the budget sessions could say, you know, I want to add a police officer, or I think we've got too many at the wastewater treatment. And those decisions, those organization decisions are clearly up to the board and the superintendent.
I agree.
And I just don't think we were, I don't think we were certain enough about that, because the question lingered. I mean, some people just don't want to hear the answer, and I get, I get that.
Look, it was an odd situation, I mean, it doesn't happen all the time. But I mean, I think, I think... Kim, you did say, you know, that, that we can't, you know, that you can direct the funds, but you can't direct the positions, right? And so, I think that, I think that was clear. But I think there was, at least, there was maybe that lingering expectation that the funds could, had to go to this thing, or misunderstanding. But I think there's also a misunderstanding about, okay, so what are they going to do with it? You know, if it doesn't, even if it doesn't have to go with it, what are they deciding to do with it?
It's not pretty clear above that.
We never, we never said, one way or the other, what those funds were going to be used for, whether they were going to revert back or...
No, because I think this conversation started in, immediately after the Parkland shooting, which was before the deliberative session, well, after the deliberative session, but before the final vote by voters. And so, this conversation was already on the table, and the board was already talking about a school resource officer in March.
I guess what we're saying is, is we're, we're doing what we think is in the best interest, and we're not ignoring what was said at the, the meeting in terms of, in terms of advice and where this money should go to. You know, we think we've covered those needs. And as Meredith said earlier, these things change, and will, will change, and will, will serve the needs as they arise. But this isn't a, this isn't a situation where we're saying, no, we're not going to do that, we're going to ignore that, and we're going to do this SRO thing with the money instead. That's, that's not a good way to characterize it, you know?
Yeah, and I think we confused it again a little bit, because the discussion about the paras, you did, based on public input, change your thought processes, isn't that correct? As to how many paras we were going to have.
And we added an additional...
Oh, for the kindergarten.
Right, so there may be confusion, why you responded to us positively there, why aren't you responding? I get, I get the whole, I get it, but Mike, it's, you've said it over and over again. We've covered the educational needs, and we determined that safety was, was very much a priority.
And I don't, sometimes I don't think I'm clear on where I'm coming. I'm not coming up with these things in the middle of the night. I think there was some discussion at the last, at the last budget committee meeting. So, I heard that, you know, one member mentioning that, you know, you guys ought to be careful about, you know, directing that $80,000 to something else.
Exactly.
Meredith, one thing I wanted to...
But to finish my point, was that I think maybe there was some misunderstanding there by the well-meaning person who said it, is that we've, we aren't doing that. We were covering the needs of, you know, that are there, and we're not choosing to just, oh, this is found money, we're just going to make something up and use that. It's not it at all, I mean, we...
It was going to go back into the fund balance.
If we didn't do the SRO, I imagine, I mean, unless something else came up, it would probably just revert back.
Or it could have gone to a roof repair, I mean, it could have...
Right.
Or if we found out the mistakes were made, and we did need a certain tutor or something like that, the funds could have been used then, we would have had it. It's a, it's a catch-22, and that's what I've said to everybody. I made it, maybe it was a knee-jerk reaction, it was, I, it was definitely an emotional reaction. The next day, we had another shooting in the school. We have behaviors right now in our schools that make me on edge. I would rather have, make the mistake and spend that money on safety, and our students' safety, and then you can, you know, take me and whip me with a wet noodle, whatever, but I, I...
There's a reason, reason basis for the whole thing, it's not... I guess, that's a long-winded way, Meredith, of saying, I think we're making the right decision.
Could we find the money someplace else if we wanted to? How's that?
Yes, we would need to reduce other budget requests or other personnel. Yeah, and do a transfer from somewhere else in the budget.
And I think that question was, was asked, and I think you answered then, was we're a pretty skinny budget. I mean, it's not like we've got pockets of gold out there somewhere.
Right, and we, all we need is one special ed student, you know, and... Right, so, I mean, we're, it's tight. So, for this year, if we had that, I know it's not going to appease anybody, but if it, not everybody, if we use that, we have it, it's being used in the right way. If we find next year in the budget, we made a mistake, we do need those tutors, we do need another teacher, then we have to revisit. That's what we do every year with the budget.
Meredith, I do, we look at the, the part-time social studies teacher, that's been addressed. And I believe, if I remember correctly, that the tutor positions were eliminated, but a full-time certified teacher was brought from, going to be brought from the junior senior high school to replace those tutors.
Correct, we're removing a certified reading specialist from the junior senior high to the elementary school.
Just to reiterate that point.
We also received word on Friday, it's only preliminary, so I can't guarantee this as of yet, but that we will be getting about $18,000 more in Title I funding than we had originally been told, and this relates to some census pieces. But that would fund essentially a half-time tutor position if that pans out, but we won't know that probably for a few more weeks.
And we lost $10,000, but now we're getting $18,000 back.
We lost $43,000, I think, all told.
All right.
I think all of this, this whole conversation we've just had speaks to the evolution of things as years progress. You know, we had assistant superintendent who is leaving. So, superintendent has come up with a plan to accommodate that thing, so we're addressing that. There was an issue with safety in the schools. We had a meeting with Chief Tru... We had a meeting with Chief Tru, who suggested that the best thing for us to do was to add the second school resource officer. We met with the public, some people concurred, some people did not. We voted four to one to add that officer to the school. So I think, you know, one of the things that I have to remember is that none of this stuff happens in a vacuum. And that's Meredith's role in terms of managing that whirlwind to strategically put us in a place to address these issues as they come up. So I think all these things, even the roof, are part of those moving parts that are part of the operational flow of the schools that are not going to change in days soon. So...
Maybe the question I need to ask at this point is, are we looking at continuing to fund a resource officer? So we are looking at not only expanding this year's budget, which appears to be covered, but then looking at an ongoing additional climbing expense? Because whoever is in that position will have some kind of a, at least a cost of living increase in salary. So we're looking at a continuing budget commitment.
We'd have to look at that annually, correct?
So the, so the board has to look at that on an annual basis. But I think the spirit of the motion was that this would be an ongoing position, as I recall from that meeting.
So then although this year, the town has committed to that amount of money, we, we're basically putting the town on heads up that we're going to have an expanded budget from here on out.
I think there was, if I may, I think there was some discussion at the meeting about how these positions can only be decided on in the budget from year to year, correct? We can't give a three-year look. And so, but I think there is some, not written understanding, but implicit is that, you know, it's kind of tough to tell the police department, we're done after one year, you gotta go back. So I mean, but, but look, I mean, if the unforeseen happens and this just isn't the right thing to do, then we make the decision on a year-to-year basis. But there's no, there's no multi-year commitment. But you can't, you can't just say we're only going to try it for a year, you know, because it's...
We'll be writing an MOU, and the board will need to approve that, similar to what we did with the business administrator and facilities director positions. It's not our position, it's a, it's a town position, but the funding will stream through them, and the board will need to approve an MOU.
And the MOU may be negotiated, that the town picks up a portion of the SROs?
That, that may happen in, in current year or future years. I'm not sure that the town has any funds allocated for that purpose at this juncture either in next year's budget. But, I mean, I think, you know, you have to look at, is a school resource officer a school resource officer year-round or only during the school year? You have to, you know, those are some of the pieces that we're going to have to work through. I have a meeting with Chief Tru and Steve Fornier tomorrow, Town Administrator Fornier, to begin that conversation.
I, I, I would think that the town is going to certainly receive benefit from having an SRO who's not always at the school and is always part of the police, police department. So I would encourage the town council to understand the benefit the town is receiving as well, even though it's not by the town. That was pretty strong, right?
If the SRO is operating for the town during the vacation periods, is that then the town's financial responsibility cover their part of the cost?
That's one of the pieces we're going to have to look at.
I think you absolutely could.
Because right now, our SRO can get called out at the school.
Sure.
If they, if he's an emergency, yeah.
And I'm assuming that that was...
So they're part of the decision-making process, really.
I'm assuming if something major happened, even with the elementary school SRO, they would still be pulled out if, if, you know, God forbid, something happened. All right, so I think we've addressed that issue.
So basically, you need, you just want to know, can you move forward with these positions? See what you get for applicants, come back, say, this is what I have, this is my idea, this is who I want to fill in, and then we'll...
Yes, my goal would be to bring back finalized job descriptions pending, you know, any other input and feedback. I appreciate the comments that we received. And bring you nominees ideally on June 14th.
And then we'll vote on all that.
Yep.
Sounds good. All right, we need to approve some minutes. We're going to approve the elusive...
Do you need a motion on the funding?
It's not listed as an action, but it wouldn't hurt if you want to be clear about what we're doing, how you're...
Okay. I seek a motion to approve the funding for the SRO. Or determine the allocation of the funding for the SRO.
Yeah, I move to allocate the $80,000 put back into the budget at the town meeting for the position of the school resource officer.
You know what? I'm going to take it. I'm going to take, I'm going to second it. I still believe it. I had, I'm going to say second.
I'm not going to. And the reason that I'm not going to is if that is accomplished, that is contrary to what we've been saying all night, that we don't take monies that were put into a budget. We wouldn't reallocate the $80,000 to a new roof. We wouldn't be having this discussion. I don't think, Mike, I get where you're going, but I don't, I don't think that's...
No, Mike, did you say allocate or reallocate?
Use whatever the term is. But I thought, I thought, Al, I thought that's what we were just discussing, is that this money, although it can be put back at a town meeting, it can't be directed for a specific purpose, correct? You can't, you can't, you can't direct the school district to hire those people or hire that person, correct? Although, you know, that, that was announced, that was announced as part of the motion. I get it. My point, my long-winded statement just now was that we've addressed the needs of those positions, of those academic needs in other ways. So we don't need to put that. This is money that's now in our budget. And we've identified a different need that we, where we can use it. So if, I guess, if it's not this, aren't we just cutting from some area, other area of the budget to fund this?
Yes, that's what...
But it, but it wouldn't be any different if we budgeted $80,000 for a roof. And the administration makes, makes the decision, well, instead of that $80,000 for the roof, I'm going to add two teachers.
But Al, we didn't, we didn't budget anything. We didn't budget anything with that $80,000.
It went into the general fund.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't budget it for anything. We didn't budget it for a roof, we didn't budget it for two teaching positions. We didn't budget it for anything.
It's similar...
We haven't done any of it for anything either.
It's similar to us just before saying that we wanted to spend the $69,000 on the roof. You used, you budgeted, operating budgeted funds for that roof. If I am understanding Mike's motion correctly, it is we are allocating $80,000 to be spent on a school resource officer per...
That's fine with me.
That's what I thought I was saying.
I'm sorry, I thought, I got you, Mike.
Okay.
It's, it's just a word difference.
I understand that.
All right, it's getting late, maybe...
For the expensive $80,000, I got you.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm trying to disconnect.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 I got you, I'm sorry.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the allocation of $80,000 from the operating budget for the school resource officer at New Market Elementary School. The motion was made by Mr. Kinnison, second by Ms. McKinney. Any further discussion?
Yeah, got you.
Hearing none. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next thing...
You're going to have to ask the other question.
Up. Opposed?
She's abstaining.
Okay.
I said nay last time, I'm saying nay.
Yep, four to one. All right, we need to go back to the March 22nd elusive meeting minutes. I seek a motion from one of the other two school board members who were present that night. Mr. Kinnison or Mr. Zink? The March 22nd.
He didn't remember if I was present.
You were.
You were.
I moved to approve the minutes of the March 22, 2018, public and non-public minutes.
Motion from Mr. Kinnison, and second from Mr. Zink to approve the March 22nd public and non-public meeting minutes. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Two abstentions. All abstentions, two, three and two. All right, and then the next ones, the May 3rd, public and non-public, and the May 15th, public and non-public. I seek a motion to approve those minutes.
I approve those, I would make, I make a motion to approve both of those people.
And a motion from Ms. McKinney, and a second from Ms. Alberg to approve minutes from the May 3rd meetings, public and non-public, and May 13th. No, 15th, I need glasses, public and non-public meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained from May 3rd, I wasn't here.
You were here May 15th.
You were.
But I was here.
Do we have the manifests? We probably need another motion for that.
Lisa, we'll go see, and we will do another item.
We can do the policy.
Trying to figure out where to put your packet.
All right, on the very back. No.
No, before the special ed report.
Yes, before the special ed report. On the back of the page.
After the check for $3,200. So this is your investment policy. Statute requires that it be reviewed annually. So we are bringing it to you for review. We have no recommended changes to this. We reviewed this last year. And we are recommending that we move it forward.
Do we have to do a reading?
Is this a reading then at the 14th?
Yes, correct, you'll vote on the 14th.
Okay.
All right, and we will see if we have the manifests, and then we will go into non-public session. Yes.
Have you ever the next meetings that are scheduled while we're meeting?
Yes, Meredith, thank you. Our next school board meeting is a school board retreat this Friday, June 1st, at 4:00 p.m. The building committee meeting will take place on June 5th at six o'clock in the New Market Elementary School library. There's a Butters meeting prior, at, starting at six.
Starting at six.
And then the meeting will proceed after that. And the next school board meeting is scheduled for June 14th at 7:00 p.m. in the town council chambers. And let's see if we...
No manifests.
Okay, we will address the manifest at the next meeting. I seek a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A32AB and C. And we have a motion from Ms. McKinney, second from Mr. Zink to go into non-public session at 9:47 p.m. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
Mr. Kinnison?
Aye.
Ms. Alberg?
Aye.
Me, we are in non-public session.